Okay, so we ended close session just a couple of minutes later. We started about 7:04. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It is 7:05 and I'm calling to order the June 3 meeting of the San Leandro City Council. It is 7:05. So at this point in time, I'd like to have somebody volunteer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, Councilmember Azavito, please.
Please stand. Pledge of Allegiance to the five states of America and to the Republic of Japan, why is nation of God invisible to the free and justice world?
Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Yes. Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azavito.
Present.
Councilmember Baloo.
Present.
Councilmember Bowen.
Present.
Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Simon.
Present.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
All members are present?
So tonight, we have the appointments swearing in of a Commissioner under item 10A. I'd like to move this item up to Section 4, Recognitions. In the interest of time for the appointee, looking down the road to see if there's any objections, seeing none, we'll proceed. Just for the benefit of the public, the City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or the California Fair Employment and Housing Act, California Penal Code, Sections 403 or 415, are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your announcement.
If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute window for public comments, which will take place under Item 5 or Item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after City Council reports. Thank you.
So at this point in time, we're going to move to item number four, which is Report on Closed Session Action Taken. So there was a robust discussion lasting about an hour and a half. At the conclusion of that, on a 7-0 vote, the City Council voted to appoint Janelle Cameron as our next city manager. So the votes were... So the motion was made by Councilmember Bowen and seconded by Councilmember Baloo. The votes were Baloo, yes, Bowen, yes, Simon, yes, Aguilar, yes, Azavito, yes, Viveros Walton, yes, and Mayor Gonzalez, yes, as well. I was then authorized to enter to begin negotiating a contract with Ms. Cameron. At this point in time, we're going to move to our recognitions. So for this particular recognition of June 2024's Pride Month, I'm taking the liberty, and I say liberty and taking the privilege that I have, to actually give this to one of our own council members. It's a bit out of form, but I think you'll understand why in just a minute. So Councilmember Aguilar has been a longtime advocate for LGBTQ rights in the City of San Leandro, and he actually represents the city nationally. He is the president of the National League of Cities LGBTQ plus LO constituency group. This is his second year serving as the president on the national stage for the organization. And so I think it's rather fitting to, even though he's one of our own, and I don't want to create some sort of crazy precedent, to recognize his contributions, not only in the community, but nationally. And so we have a written proclamation, Councilmember. I know that you're in Boston attending the Harvard Executive Training Program, but I'm going to read through the proclamation and then give you a chance to offer a few words. And so for those of you that don't know, we did do our pride flag raising on the first, right at the end of the cherry parade, cherry festival parade, before commencing with our celebrations. And so here we go, June 2024 as Pride Month in San Leandro, California. Whereas the City of San Leandro cherishes and values the dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas the City of San Leandro denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month is celebrated in the month of June to commemorate the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City, in which thousands demonstrated against discrimination and harassment of lesbians, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus people. And whereas the City of San Leandro appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the LGBTQ plus community, all of whom strengthen our community and enrich the city's diversity. And whereas many LGBTQ plus residents have provided decades of hard work to organize their communities by making many sacrifices to pave the way for the civil rights that we enjoy today. And whereas it is imperative that everyone in our community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity or expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders, now therefore, I, Juan Gonzalez III, Mayor of the City of San Leandro, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as Pride Month in San Leandro. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Thank you, you know, my council colleagues in the City of San Leandro. It's, you know, this is a great place that I love to call home, and I have the privilege, honor, and pleasure of being a Bonnet fellow, attending Harvard Kennedy School of Government program for the elected officials. And so it's amazing to be here. There are four of us who are out here in Cambridge at Harvard. We have Judge Rachel Bell from Nashville, Tennessee, Senator Cameron Nelson from South Dakota, and Senator Fabian Nelson from Mississippi, who are state reps. And to share this space, not only with them, but various leaders across the world. There are folks from Saudi Arabia, folks from Australia, Ireland, Philippines, who are part of this international cohort. And to be here and represent not only San Leandro, but the LGBTQ community is an amazing honor. You know, Harvey Milk said, "Rights are won only by those who make their voices heard." And a lot of you know that I'm, you know, unapologetic, and I go out there and I like to advocate and make my voice be heard. There is, you know, today you can see the impact of the LGBT community, not only by myself, but by our federal leaders, like Pete Buttigieg, Department of Transportation, and many others in the LGBT community. We're going to National League of Cities, is having their city summit in Tampa, and Jane Castor, who is the mayor of Tampa, is the first lesbian to lead that city. And so I can't wait to partner with her and put together an amazing panel discussion and hope that you all, you know, are able to attend from, you know, our city. But it's just, it's, I've been advocating for over 25 years as an LGBTQ person. When I came out, it was difficult. There was resistance to my me coming out and being gay. My parents didn't accept it, so I moved to Hawaii to come out and live life as a gay man and spent many years out there doing a lot of work and studying policy and moving to San Leandro eventually back in 2013, or 2012, I believe, where my husband and I now, you know, call this space home. But it's been a lot of work, a lot of advocacy, and, you know, I love San Leandro and working with our community, and I was happy to coordinate and work with the mayor to put forth the pride raising flag ceremony. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there because I have my obligation here, and I heard it was a success. So thank you, Mayor, for partnering and helping lead that and working together with our community to make sure that we have our space and that we are honored and recognized. You know, I was quoted in Victory Institute, National League of Cities, you know, I had talked about Harvey Milk earlier. I said Supervisor Milk was the pioneer. We needed to break glass ceilings for LGBTQIA+ folks everywhere. His legacy still inspires change for the better. He inspires me. And Milk has paved the way, as well as many others. And when I started in office, there were only 400 LGBTQ elects nationally. Now there are over 1,000, and I'm happy to contribute to that number and be that voice, not only locally, but at the national level. This also led me to meet our President, Joe Biden, and when I had told him, "Thank you for, you know, all the work that he does for the LGBTQ community," he said, "I am LGBTQ." And what he meant by that is, one of the acronyms in LGBTQIA is ally, and he was right, and he has a great advisor. He's amazing, and he wrote a letter saying that he has my back, and I also have his. I think that's an amazing accomplishment, and I will never forget that opportunity. And I was so happy and proud to represent our beautiful city of San Leandro. So thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Happy Pride.
Happy Pride. At this point in time, we'll move to item 10A, which was our moved item to this point in time, and I'll pass the floor to City Clerk Clancy.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. This evening before you is a motion to appoint Youngso to the Arts, Culture, and Library Commission after a nomination at the last council meeting.
So do I have a motion?
So moved?
It's moved by Councilmember Aguilar. By the second. Councilmember Aguilar, would you mind yielding into a second position so that Councilmember Viveros Walton can make the nomination? Or the motion? Thank you for doing that. So I've got a motion by Councilmember Viveros Walton and a second by Councilmember Aguilar. Is there any discussion? Okay, so can we please have a vote?
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
All votes are in. Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. Councilmember Bowen, yes. Councilmember Baloo, yes. And Mayor Gonzalez, yes. And now I will move to administer the oath of office.
Please do.
Young, are you here? We have Young.
We'll just do that at a future meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to move to our consent calendar, item number five. Are there any amendments to our consent calendar? And just to be clear, are you punched in for this? Perfect. And Vice Mayor, are you punched in for this item? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So are there any items that council members seek to pull from the consent calendar? If seeing none, I will take a motion. Councilmember Bowen?
Oh, I'll move the item.
Okay, and Councilmember Azavito?
I'll second it.
Okay. So I do have a motion by Councilmember Bowen with a second by Councilmember Azavito. And at this point in time, let's take public comment on this item, please.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment in person, and we have two comments online.
Please proceed.
Serlene Grant.
Good evening. I'm commenting on item 5E because I don't know if you all know the history, and as they say, you have to know your history to know where you've been, to know where you're going. I don't want you all to throw good money after bad. So when you're looking at the transportation plan, at least look for something new, some new designs, some new funding, some new approaches. This Bay Fair corridor, Bay Fair area, has been studied to death. In 2007, during my term, there was a Bay Fair Plan, TOD and Access Plan. In 2009, there was a Bay Fair Stationery Improvement Plan. In 2011, there was a Bay Fair Access and Development Plan with BART. In time, those were every two years. Now, in 2018, there was a Bay Fair TLD specific plan, and in 2018, there was a Bay Fair Connection Plan with ACTC money. And in 2021, some of you approved the zoning amendments. So all of these had traffic, transportation, and circulation studies. All of these had, not all of these, some of these had EIRs. So I would ask you to revisit the scope, do something new, do something different with that $300,000, because we have looked at this, and I know since 2007, new kinds of transit have come into town, like Lyft and Uber and some other things, but it's not $300,000 worth of new. So just take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we will now go to public comment online. Lucas, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking my comment this evening. I am calling about three items. Item 5D, item 5E, and item 5I. And my comments are very similar to the comments that I typically make, which are that the billing rates for some of these consulting services agreements are extraordinarily high, and that they feel a little bit on the exorbitant side. I'll read you some of the prices from some of the amendments that are attached to these items. Report production billed at, and this is from item 24, Attachment 24203B, Baker Tilly, CSA Amendment Number One, Page Eight. Report production billed at $225 an hour. Another one, report production billed at $180 an hour. Item 24 to 27B, CSA Good Company with Draft Scope of Work, Page 20. Administrative specialist billed at $90 an hour. Page 22, administrative support billed at $110 an hour. Attachment 24224C, CSA Compensation Schedule. Product specialist clerical billed at $105 an hour. Assistant technician and word processor, $135 an hour. I would really invite the city to think about whether we're spending our money well. You know, I say the federal minimum age is 725, California 16, San Leandro maybe 20, and just because the city pays our employees very well doesn't mean we get to pay consultants four or five or six times better. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen F., you may unmute yourself. Karen? Okay, we will circle back to you. Doug Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to speak on items 5A and 5H. 5H is real simple. Thank you for, to the city for moving to electric vehicles, so the purchase of electric transit vans is welcome, and I hope that we move forward with all due haste to fully electrify the city's fleet of vehicles, including the police department and all other departments. 5A, I really am happy to see all of these appointments to the city's boards and commissions. I congratulate those who have been nominated and wish them luck. I'm really thankful that, you know, the commissions are, positions are being filled. I feel these are important bodies in our city's government. I wish that we would take them more seriously when, for example, the CPRB makes recommendations to the council that you read them in detail and actually adopt them. And, you know, most of these were And, you know, most of these were appointed rather quickly. A few of them have been outstanding for some time. But, you know, let's keep it going. And Mayor, I'm mindful that you called for, you know, Budget Task Force Advisory kind of committee. And I don't know if you would accept nominations from me, but I'm a nominate Lucas. And I also nominate John Minor. And I'd love to see that body get together and start working soon. I also had wanted to speak briefly about the proclamation on Gay Pride Month. Happy Gay Pride. Congratulations, everyone. It is disconcerting, however, to read the pages of Nextdoor and Facebook and see a number of homophobic responses. People who are not celebrating with the rest of the community. And I wish you would just be quiet. If, you know, you don't have something nice and positive, say, just keep it to yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to go to Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Simon, please.
Yes. After hearing some of the public comments, I have some questions or a little bit concerned about item five E. Can we still pull that and have some more information provided on that item?
Okay, so I've got Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Simon pulling item five E. Any other items? Okay, so I can't remember. We had a motion by Bowen and Azavito. So I'm going to ask you if you're willing to amend that motion accordingly to reflect the pulling of that item by Councilmember, by Vice Mayor Simon, please. So I have a head nod from Bowen and a head nod from Azavito. So at this point in time, what I'd like to do is vote on the standing motion, which is to approve all consent items except for item five E. And then have further discussion on five E in particular. Please vote.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Aye.
Councilmember Azavito? Sorry, Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Baloo, yes. Councilmember Bowen, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I'd like to move to a discussion of item five E. Certainly, I can provide a little bit of context, but we'll turn to our city manager and Vice Mayor to explore further as we go back and forth. As people may not know, the Bay Fair Mall was purchased a couple of years back by a new set of investors. And through their efforts, the direction that that space is moving is really in a new direction. As they move from the potential at one point in time of really tearing down the mall and starting from scratch, to now they are looking to bring businesses, in particular, certain tech businesses into that space. So we continue to look at opportunities for putting up housing, but that's contingent on the owners of the land, namely B3. And I think that we're also exploring more closely, specifically in conjunction with BART, how to move people much more effectively from East 14th to BART to create a true corridor. And that's going to involve taking over some land potentially, or splitting, providing some easements and the like. So it's a pretty complex process that keeps pivoting based on the potential uses of the mall. But with that in mind, city manager, I don't know if there's some color that you'd like to offer and/or to bring up somebody?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. If I could just bring up Assistant Community Director Avalon Schultz. And I would offer that she field questions and then maybe add more background as she answers those questions about the background.
Perfect. So at this point in time, we'll get a council member questions to explore this further. Vice Mayor, please.
You have my questions primarily stem from the public commenter, Serlene Grant, our former council member. And there's a lot of history that we heard of, a lot of study's been done on transportation. And just want to understand, I got a little bit from the mayor, but in more depth, why are we doing this? And 350,000 is quite a bit. And really, what's entailed for that amount of money?
Yes, thank you. So you will recall, we received a $1.8 million PDA grant from MTC. That's a lot of acronyms, but it's a Priority Development Area Grant to focus on the next phase to hopefully move towards implementation for Bay Fair. So the commenter is correct, there's been a lot of planning. It's been a big part of the city's vision to see a transit-oriented development around the Bay Fair BART station for much time now. And we are looking at maximizing grant funds to move towards implementation. And so the PDA grant money is going to be complemented by this additional grant from ACTC. ACTC is our Regional Transportation Authority here for Alameda County. And they, they had a pot of funds that was specifically earmarked for community-based transportation planning. And that involves a lot of outreach to the community to find out how they would like to see the area improved to more safely access BART and to get around on bikes and by foot. And so those funds were earmarked specifically for this type of planning around transportation. And instead of ACTC doing the plan, they reached out to cities in the county within the central part of the county to offer those funds to us to do additional work. The other strategic point of using these funds for Bay Fair is that they will have a pipeline of funding for implementation. So we will be reaching out to the community, and it's both San Leandro and unincorporated Alameda County, to understand how they can safely access the BART station and traverse the site, as the mayor mentioned. And then we'll put together like a mini CIP of projects that would help improve access. And then in the future, that mini CIP will have additional access to grant funds to implement. So it's a really exciting move towards implementation. And these funds weren't eligible for any other use. So we were excited to receive them and think that they will complement our development plan work very well and help us stretch the grant money even further than we would have with just the $1.8 million.
Thank you. Want to confirm, this is all grant funded?
It's all grant funded.
No San Leandro tax?
No, that's correct.
Okay. And you mentioned, the mayor mentioned a corridor from East 14th to the BART. Are you looking at an actual new road or pathways?
Yes. Yeah, so back when the East Bay Greenway was envisioned to be occurring on the railroad tracks, it would have ended right at the BART station. And since that project has been delayed, they are now looking at a separated bike lane on East 14th Street. And so we do want to figure out how to connect across the mall site. So all those people that are going to be biking down East 14th, how are they going to safely get to the BART station? And so this will be very much the focus of these grant funds. And again, there are a lot of important community assets in unincorporated Alameda County just beyond the city's boundary. And so the $350,000 isn't just for San Leandro. We're sharing those funds with Alameda County. We're the lead, but they will be part of the project and the planning. And we'll make sure that people coming to the station have safe ways to get there.
Safety and security, are those being considered? Not just physical bicycle type of safety, but crime?
Yes.
Safety?
Yeah, under the development plan, the $1.8 million grant, absolutely, safety, security, how we do implementation, how we can make people feel safe going to work, shopping at Bay Fair. The CBTP funds are set aside for safe travel. But the development plan, the bigger grant, will definitely be focusing on all aspects of safety.
Thank you.
Councilmember Azavito, please.
Yeah, a lot of my questions got answered. But the new pathway or easement that we're looking to, is it going to have any end of domain? Excuse me. End of domain, are we going to be looking into having to acquire people's properties or their houses? Because I know before, there was an area over there we were looking into.
We haven't kicked off the effort yet, so I don't want to rule out any options. But we are working with the property owners and we hope to do so in a very collaborative effort and figure out what works for the property owners and the different agencies involved. We haven't come up with strategies yet. That will be part of the project when it kicks off later this summer.
My other question, you kind of answered it, but it was, what different are we, what else are we going to be looking into that we haven't looked in before for this $350,000 with this consulting?
Yeah, so we've been thinking really big when it comes to Bay Fair about the future for a transit-oriented development. This will also allow us to reach out into the areas in the city and county where people could bike or walk to the BART station to think about improvements out there. So instead of just focusing on the mall and the BART station, this money looks more out into the community for improvement so that people can actually get to the BART station. So that will be the specific flavor of this effort. And so it's very community-based. So we'll be out there getting in materials out to people, doing pop-up events, having workshops, making sure we heard what people said, making sure it's in multiple languages. That's what's special about this pot of funds. And we're very grateful that ACTC highlighted San Leandro and Bay Fair BART as a priority as they were looking to dole out the resources. So we definitely are not going to be just redoing the same thing we've already done. It'll be a new plan that's envisioned to get us closer to implementation.
We have not to exceed 350,000. So have we done an estimate, how much it might cost? Is it going to be 200 something thousand or?
No, we're going to maximize the fund. So we're going to spend every dollar that we've been given as the grant. And we've worked with the consultants on a scope of work that basically stretches what we were originally going to do even further. It allows us to do more focus on other topics because now we have this new funding source for the transportation piece.
Councilmember Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Avalon. I'm going to put on another hat as I speak as well. I sit on ACTC for Supervisor Tam. And so I know that Alameda CTC is really focused in a real way on racial equity and community feedback. And so I really appreciate that the funds are there for us to really be able to do critical outreach to understand how best to serve the community and develop the Bay Fair equity for the community. Can, I have a few questions. With the East Bay Greenway and ACTC getting funding for it and kicking off a plan to connect BART stations from Lake Merritt down to Hayward BART, when we're talking about this planning, how much is that in, obviously aligned? But is it part of that project? Or is it in conjunction to, is it about that last mile from the East Bay Greenway?
Right. It's complimentary to the larger ACTC-led East Bay Greenway project. And it will form those linkages, those connections from that effort to all of the exciting, you know, change that we anticipate for Bay Fair. It's connecting the dots between other projects, if you will. But you're right about the outreach and engagement and the focus on equity with these funding sources.
And using these grant funds, which as somebody who's received grants, you really want to optimize the funds that you get. By using, by being selected and using these funds, we are primed to be able to get more funding because of the work we're doing with this?
That's correct. There's, my understanding is that there's dedicated implementation money set aside for implementing community-based transportation plans. So if we don't have a community-based transportation plan, we wouldn't be eligible for those construction dollars down the line. So this sets us up for more investment in the future.
Great. And then to ask about, as a funder as well, you know, use of funds and so the cost of consultants and certainly who we're using. How do we, as an organization, and this may be a question for you, city manager, but in terms of fees that consultants ask for and the work plans, the work scope, what's our process for that to ensure that we're not really, you know, just overpaying? But is this what the going market rate is for consultants? And how are we deciding who we use and how much we spend?
Yeah, so this would definitely meet the threshold for a public RFP process. And it would be a competitive scope of work that's provided to the public to review. And those who have the skills, knowledge, and abilities to be able to perform the work are able to bid on it. And then they go through the review of those who are interested and apply. It's very market-driven. And that, you tend to pay what the market's driving on those types of expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll just give a couple of quick thoughts on this item, just reinforcing what my council members have already said. First, a reminder that the city of San Leandro and the city of Oakland are the beneficiaries of a $30 million federal grant supporting the East Bay Greenway. And so this is a really big deal, right? We announced it, I don't know, maybe about two months ago. And so we will have specific benefit. And now this ability to connect and to be planning on how to connect that Greenway to Bay Fair BART, I think, is strategically aligned. I concur with Councilmember Bowen. I also sit on ACTC, and it is a strategic priority of ACTC. Ensure that there's equitable distribution and with a focus on disadvantaged communities. And so when we think about the Bay Fair area in particular, and you think about Ashland, unincorporated San Leandro, the significant ability to say, you are impacting a disadvantaged community through this outreach and not hypothesizing what they might want, but actually speak to people in that geography, I think, is quite powerful. And I personally find it very compelling that it sets us up for implementation money. Because I think a lot of times what the funders want to see is that you've got something that's aligned to what they want and that it's come out of your planning process. And so I'm particularly excited by this. So I appreciate the concern. I appreciate that it's taken a long time, whether it's at our Marina Development or what's happened at Bay Fair over the years. Things have changed. I get it. But I do think that we're at a good point right now and would encourage us to move forward. Any further discussion at this time? Councilmember Aguilar, cannot see. Do you have your hand up? It does not appear that way. So at this point in time, I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Blue?
Move five E.
Vice Mayor, please.
Second.
So I've got a motion from Councilmember Blue, a second from our Vice Mayor. No further discussion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember, oh, I keep doing this. Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Baloo, yes. Councilmember Bowen, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. And Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes seven zero.
At this point in time, we're going to move back to item 10A because we do have our new Commissioner for the Arts, Culture, and Library Commission President present. So please come on up and we are going to swear you in.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm going to have you open my presentation. And repeat after me?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
All enemies, domestic and foreign.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then now I'll have you sign your.
So do I say something? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So do I say something about myself, I guess?
If you'd like to, you've got one minute to just.
I got one minute?
Whatever you want to.
Well, I love San Leandro. I lived here 30-plus years in the downtown area and I'm highly invested in District One Works. And then I like the statue, obviously. It's beautiful. Even it's beautiful at night. So I'll do what I can to help the city. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So at this point in time, we'll move to city manager and city attorney reports, if we have any. Do we have reports?
I have one quick report. Wouldn't be wrapping up the Cherry Festival without some huge callouts. I want to extend my appreciation to the Recreation and Parks Department, the San Leandro Improvement Association. All the city staff for their outstanding coordination and participation in the Cherry Festival Parade and Event. This is an all-hands-on-deck event for the city of San Leandro employees. This year featured over 200 vendors and 48 parade entries, creating a vibrant and very exciting atmosphere. The event day was absolutely perfect with cool and bright weather. And I've received numerous positive comments from attendees, especially regarding the expanded vendor offerings. The 2024 Cherry Parade also marked the second year the city produced a live broadcast with live streams on Facebook and YouTube. This broadcast reached thousands of viewers across the Bay Area, further enhancing the festival's success. So just thank you for those who helped make it wonderful and those who came and made it, made it the beautiful event it is.
It was an amazing event, one that brands our city really well. So you guys are awesome. Let's go to public comment. I'm sure people are lined up to talk to us about the wonderful Cherry Festival, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have nine members of, wow, nine commenters who would like to comment in person and a couple hands up online. And I will start with Judy Square in person.
No, I'd be first. Hi, I'm Judy Square. I serve on the steering committee of the Church of Christ Lewis Avenue Neighborhood Resilience Hub. We are a hybrid of church and nearby neighbors, and we are one of 13 hubs that have been established recently with the Resilience Hubs Initiative. Our hub has been focusing on solar energy, a community garden, emergency preparedness, and building neighborhood cohesion. Now imagine what it would be like to have dozens of resilience hubs all across San Leandro, each one doing their part to mitigate climate change, promote sustainability, and forge community connections between neighbors. These hubs personally know the people and businesses in their separate spheres of influence. They can serve as boots on the ground to get climate change projects happening. The more hubs we can develop, the more we can tackle sustainability projects at the grassroots level. And you know how hard it is to get people engaged. Usually it takes personal contact to get involvement. So the more resilience hubs we have, the more avenues we have to get people on board with all the climate change initiatives that San Leandro would like to get accomplished over the next few years. And we all know that we are way overdue for a big earthquake in our area. What if we have resilience hubs scattered all over the city to take care of people in the immediate aftermath before the government help arrives? The best chance of making this happen is to prioritize a sustainability department and don't fold it in with other environmental services. If we have a sustainability manager who is not also responsible for stormwater or waste or similar things, they will have time to put into the development of resilience hubs. Otherwise, they will probably be stretched way too thin and the hubs won't get developed. Please think carefully about you, how you configure staffing so that we can make sustainability a high priority with plenty of resources. I believe San Leandro could be a model city in terms of sustainability if we do the staffing right. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you. Mitch Heidemann.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mitch Heidemann from District Five, longtime resident. And I want to say thank you all for agreeing to bring Janelle on. My experience with her has been fantastic. I'm really impressed with her. So I'm excited, very sad about Fran leaving us, but I'm excited about seeing Janelle in this position. Also want to support what she was saying about the resilience hubs and, and really making sure that we make good use of these hubs and that people are aware of them and that it's a place to, that each of them are a place to bring the community in, to have people have an opportunity to get to know each other, but also understand what the resources are within those hubs for when we do have emergencies, because we will have emergencies, and also make more of those connections together. I think it's a good opportunity to use those in a way that brings more people together to work together, even when they may not agree with each other on other things. So, thanks.
Thank you. Michael Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Michael Gregory, President, Friends of the San Leandro Creek. I'm joined tonight here, wait, let me interrupt myself. Congratulations. I'm here and joined tonight with members of my board. Jan Weicherson and Larry Hels, my Vice President, also manages the Butterfly Garden. And we're transitioning away from the nest of the, of the city that we've had for over 15 years as a partner, but will continue as a partner. And we've hired, Susan's leaving us in the end of this month. Susan will be speaking. And we're going to be bringing Anne Graham in, a San Leandro win from Hayward, hard, to help us with our programming. We will continue our programming. We're going to de-emphasize some of the root park activities that we've had over the years. We've moved up to Chabot Park. We're in the process of building a demonstration garden to help people that have creek property or properties on how to manage their creek property. And we have some huge successes in the last couple of years with the introduction or reintroduction of some river otters back into our watershed. Woo-hoo. And salmon. To be continued on this subject, we have had salmon sighted up by the dam because of the great flow we had in December. So I'm, I'll be working with East Bay mud, hopefully, to get those reestablished in December. And so we'll be seeing this on a regular basis. But it's working. So.
Thank you. Susan Levinson.
I'm going to read mine. Good evening, esteemed council and Mayor Gonzalez. My name is Susan Levinson, and I've been the coordinator for Friends of San Leandro Creek for the last 12 years. Tonight, I'm here to thank you and all of your colleagues before you since the inception of the Friends in 1993. Since then, we've held a hybrid position, supported by the city by an in-kind agreement. Our five-year continuous contract with Alameda County Flood Control pays our bills and make you our contractor. You've supplied past and current coordinators with office space, a city phone and a computer. The Friends are most appreciative, not only the benefits we've reaped the last 31 years, but the positive relationship. That's why we were so flummoxed at the city's recent decision to ask us to become independent contractors to leave the city. Our contract is due to be terminated June 30th. Quietly and continuously, the Friends have held creek cleanups, environmental events, and ongoing restoration of the creek. We do oral presentations and put out an informative newsletter. But most importantly, we educate. As a retired classroom teacher, it has been my pleasure to lead science-based field trips on the San Leandro Creek. In the past two years, we have served 972 students during the school year and another 300 at the city's Chabot Day Camp. The city is not credited with direct support to any other environmental education programming. Because we literally cost the city nothing but space and borrowed equipment, you can see why we are disconcerted. We cannot leave without notifying you, our council and mayor of this news.
Your time is up.
Our gratitude is yours.
Thank you. Steve Wiley.
Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to endorse what Susan just said. And I'm one of the teachers that does the field trip program. And I just want you to know, we do a quality program. Teachers tell us all the time that we are the best field trip, the most aligned with the state educational standards. We're really proud of what we do and we think we deserve to be under the umbrella of the city. The city's umbrella gives us prestige. When we tell people that we're a part of the city of San Leandro, it means something. And that's just as it should be. We've also been endorsed by the leadership of the Moakua Aloni Group. Some of you know them. They've sent an email to the mayor about our situation. They've come and seen our field trips and they have given us their endorsement. So I just want to appeal to you to keep us in the family. We're a gem that nobody seems to know about. But teachers know us and appreciate what we're doing. And the, the students do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, Larry Hills? Hills?
I'm the Vice President of Friends of San Leandro Creek, and I am here to reinforce everything the last two speakers have said. San Leandro Creek is a major resource for us. It's one of the major reasons why San Leandro is here at all, because it was a line of commerce to begin with. And I think it needs all the support we can give it. We've, at this point, cleared 6,000 square feet of invasive plants up in Chabot, and we are ready to plant with new native plants to show people what the creek looked like before we got here. And I would also petition you to, to maintain the relationship we've had with Friends of the Creek as we go forward. We, in that 6,000 square feet, we have removed literally hundreds of cubic yards of invasive plants. It's, it's, it's about all you can find in most of the creek. But it's, it's going to be looking more like historical San Leandro Creek. And I, I hope for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dyxel.
Hello, everyone. My name is John, and we have a problem with our neighbor. So I'm going to refer this as a pesky neighbor incident. Tomorrow, you will be receiving an email with some explicit pictures. We have children in our block that are seeing material that should not be seen in our vehicle. Also, he has, this particular person has listening devices and evasive camera equipment that is evasive to the neighborhood. And it's not just me, it's the entire neighborhood. So I just wanted to point that out. Again, my name is John Dyxel. You will receive those pictures courtesy of the courtesy clerk, from the clerk. And if you would kindly respond, I was told I could get a court order, but court order is a lot more evasive, and I don't have deep pockets, unfortunately. So with that, keep that in mind. If you could respond in any way that could help us, we would really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Carol Bardoff.
My name is Carol Bardoff, and I'm in Homegrown Habitat San Leandro. I am also in First Wednesdays San Leandro, which was instrumental in bringing about this, this city's 2019 Declaration of a Climate Emergency. This resolution calls for an emergency mobilization effort and an immediate transition to an economy that is ecologically sustainable, equitable, and just for all its members. This is a commitment that the city made, the city leaders made to all who live here. But the new changes to the sustainability manager's position, now the environmental services manager, contradict the commitments of the emergency resolution. I'm troubled that the city is loading this position with responsibilities that depreciate climate change programs. I know that Dr. Hoi Fae Maok was always acutely busy, pressed for time in executing the numerous strategies of the 230-page Climate Action Plan. And now one person is supposed to address the complexities of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and adapting to, to the severe conditions of climate change, plus oversee the city's solid waste management and steer a storm drain master plan? This doesn't make sense to me. Hoi Fae Maok used their wealth of talents and experience to benefit our city. They secured grant monies for new projects and fostered alliances with climate vulnerable communities. They made strides in addressing many critical issues like greenhouse gases, sea level rise, energy efficiency, EVs, flooding, solar, resiliency hubs. So we need to make climate disaster as.
Thank you. Stephanie? Stephanie P.
Hi there. My name is Stephanie Pruegel. I'm actively involved in Homegrown Habitat San Leandro, and I'm on the Government Affairs and Partnerships Committee at San Leandro 2050. I strongly disapprove of the city's plan to diminish the sustainability manager's position by merging it with stormwater and solid waste. San Leandro is already not doing a great job responding to climate change and sustainability needs. We're writing plans, a bike plan, a tree plan, a climate plan, a sea level plan, the Bay Fair TOD plan, but it's just words with little action. We're literally Nero fiddling while Rome burns. And now you're taking the one position with the impossible job of leading San Leandro's response to climate change, and you're burying it with a host of regulatory responsibility, which means cutting the position's time, budget and direct access to staff in leadership. And in short, you're undermining any chance for real progress and solutions. I also want to comment on the importance of the position to community engagement. During the tenure of Sustainability Manager, Dr. Maok initiated and championed many community-based sustainability efforts, including the resilience hubs, Homegrown Habitat San Leandro, and many others. These programs have mobilized grassroots action with a level of meaningful community engagement the city hasn't seen in a long time, maybe the only time. It's community members like myself and many people in this room tonight who are doing the work, but the ongoing support and validation through the Office of Sustainability is critical to sustain these initiatives. I urge San Leandro to make a serious investment in real climate action with a full-time sustainability manager at the city's leadership level to prepare San Leandro for the critical issues ahead. Or if you're not sharing these goals, please be transparent and simply end the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment in person, so we will go to online public comment. Sean Fong, you may unmute yourself.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Sean Fong, and I'm a homeowner in District Two and a volunteer at the Regional Resource Center, formerly known as VACIB, which is one of several resilience hubs in the city. And I'm also a professional in the climate industry. I like to speak in support of the sustainability program and the proposed changes that were made recently to the division, specifically the new environmental services manager position. Climate change cannot be ignored. Between 1980 and 2023, the U.S. sustained 376 weather and climate disasters with overall damages and costs that exceeds $2.7 trillion. Damages from climate change impacts the health and well-being of communities worldwide and across the U.S., including communities right here in San Leandro. For every dollar spent on climate adaption, adoption now, adaption now, we save at least $6 in addressing the impacts of climate change later. So this is why sustainability program here in San Leandro is important to me. Council recently approved a staffing change to merge stormwater, waste and sustainability under a new. under a new Environmental Service Manager position via a Budget Appropriations Resolution. I'd like to formally note a few concerns with this action. Merging sustainability with stormwater and waste will cause inefficiencies and an inability to accomplish climate and sustainability goals. As mentioned earlier, Environmental Service Manager will be focused on non-sustainability responsibilities, decreasing the bandwidth for sustainability program matters. The Sustainability Program and its manager will exist in a space in the organization where lack of authority and resourcing will hamstring the program manager's ability to influence decisions, make systemic changes, and have a meaningful impact on sustainability initiatives. A $100,000 budget is not enough to implement a Climate Action Plan. That being said, I ask the council to support sustainability in San Leandro by, one, ensuring that sustainability remains a priority to fund and staff; two, continue having the Sustainability Manager report to its department head to ensure a proper authority; and three, keep sustainability.
Your time is up. Douglas Balding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. We're going to continue with the theme here. San Leandro has really de-emphasized sustainability, unfortunately. And it's just not, it's not just merely a matter of, you know, put your money where your mouth is. It's really about disrespect. I can't help but wonder whether Susan Levinson would continue in her current position if she had been shown a little bit more respect. But that wasn't true. Thankfully, Susan's not going far away. She'll, you know, volunteer to continue working with the board. And I certainly welcome Ann Graham. I hope that we don't make her feel unwelcome and she ends up leaving the position. You know, that is what happened with Dr. Maok. Dr. Maok would still be here, at least for some time, I believe, had they been shown more respect by the city. All right, there's so many things to talk about. On the topic of sustainability, I have my stormwater fee amendment ballot here. And I would like to call on the City Council to make some amendments. First, it makes sense to me to excuse elderly and low-income residents from the stormwater fee increase. I do support it. I have my ballot. I'm marking it, yes, I'm putting it in the mail. I think it would be a good thing to incentivize installation of rainwater collection systems and rain gardens and other things that would, you know, keep water from going into the stormwater and, you know, build up that sustainability in our city. On other topics, I want to really applaud hiring on Janelle Cameron. That's really great. Unlike what we're doing with people in the sustainability business, I think this is a case of strategically retaining, you know, a quality and talented manager. And finally, I want to just point out the statistics in the San Leandro Times about the point and time count. It's really good news. Fewer people on the streets, really significant, one-third fewer homeless in San Leandro. That's 85 individuals in the navigation.
Your time is up. Leo West, you may unmute yourself.
Oh, yes. Well, we see meeting after meeting, we see a pack of yes people at the city council. There's no independent thinking, no capability of having a different idea. And then we have all these recognitions of fringe elements of the society month after month. I wonder when there's going to be a San Leandro taxpayer recognition month. And talking of taxpayers, we have a council member in my district, Ms. Bowen, who takes money from taxpayers to go to trips and even go above the legal allocation with the yes people sanctioning. So this is what we have. And it's, I guess that's why Ms. Bowen doesn't have time to answer the email, the several emails I sent her. And this is not limited to her. It's, there are others who do the same. But considering that Ms. Bowen is new to the city council, how come she has all this authorization to overspend her allocation? So there's no explanation. There's the yes people, the city council, and yes, 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 that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
So without a close public comment, and I do think that there's an opportunity here for some connections or clarifications. So for the constituent with a pesky neighbor, is he still here? So when you watch the recording of this meeting, please connect with our chief. To the President of the Friends of the San Leandro Creek, please connect with the city manager. She would like to speak with you. With respect to an alleged overspending of budgets, there is no such activity happening. We have set up a program specifically to enable the training of individuals at Harvard or Stanford to promote leadership development specifically. And that's for department heads or council members that will benefit from that. All of us benefit from ongoing training. It is a very, very small amount of money compared to the city budget and certainly compared to the value that's being delivered by that type of training. In the end, we need to remember that money is not being paid to a council member. It's being paid to the university. The last thought that I would like to address, because I know we addressed this before. So I'm a little bit unclear about the source of the confusion. So I want to revisit this issue about the restructuring of sustainability in particular. I believe we addressed this approximately a month or two ago. So I'm going to come back to city manager to talk a bit about the restructuring and how this isn't us walking away from our commitment to sustainability. In fact, you saw us dedicate specifically money for electrification on this very agenda. So I'm a little bit confused. So I'm going to pass it to you, city manager, to talk a little bit about the restructuring that has occurred and to clarify.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the public who came out. I definitely appreciate the opportunity to clear up the facts and what is actually happening with sustainability in the city. And first of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Maok. I had pleasure of working with them for the last three and a half years. And their loss to the state of California was definitely a sad moment for me in San Leandro and all of you. I can feel it. However, I, as I talked to Dr. Maok, I couldn't be more excited that they're actually representing the city in the governor's office. So that's pretty exciting and I think compelling for the city in our development of staff. So what is happening is actually we are not eliminating the Sustainability Manager position. We will be recruiting for that position to replace Dr. Maok. And the plan is to have the same set of job skills and tasks to be performed. The resiliency hubs are, continue to be a priority. And the collaboration with emergency management is not only the climate sustainability, but on the emergency management side as well. What we've done is expand the footprint. So we're adding an Environmental Services Manager to oversee a division of people, including the Sustainability Manager, where now we have the ability of staff to collaborate around stormwater, solid waste management, recycling, SB 1383 implementation. And so now you have all of these climate-related projects that protect our stormwaters, our stormwater system, all the wastes recycling from, that's collected in the city. And how do we educate the community around being more mindful about the impacts of that to the climate? And so I just want to reassure you that we've actually expanded the team and making it a division within the city instead of a person of one. So I just want to reassure you that we, I believe the council too, is still very committed to our Climate Action Plan. And we are hopeful that having a team is going to provide more support and succession planning and backup in these efforts.
At this point in time, we're going to move to our public hearings section of the agenda, item number eight. And particularly, we're looking at adopting an urgency ordinance to enact a zoning moratorium to prohibit in new locations, the sale of tobacco-related products and electronic cigarette-related products, as well as new tobacconist cigarette stores throughout the city of San Leandro. So what we're going to do here is we're going to start with Assistant Community Development Director Avalon Schultz presenting to us on this topic.
Good evening again. So staff is proposing a temporary moratorium on new businesses that sell tobacco or electronic cigarettes and related items. And this would help us address our outdated codes that have limited enforcement options. And so to be clear, this is initiated by staff as we've done our day-to-day work and have found challenges with the existing legislative environment. We are seeking council's help in pausing new businesses that sell these items while we address our outdated codes. For context, we do have a municipal code chapters that's focused on tobacco retailers and requires a tobacco retailer's license for folks that sell tobacco and electronic cigarette and related items. That's in the municipal code. We also have a zoning code that regulates the types of businesses that can come to town. And we have a very kind of unique definition here in the zoning code that's been there for quite some time for a tobacconist or a cigarette shop. And those have very specific definitions that have more than 20% of the floor area or display area for those items, as well as a gross receipts threshold, which is nearly impossible to check or enforce. And then for those businesses that met those two thresholds, one of those two thresholds, then we have some controls, like needing a conditional use permit from our Board of Zoning Adjustments, or having a separation from sensitive uses like schools, parks, and libraries, and having a restriction on hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. But in that, there is a loophole. And so businesses have been coming into town with increasing frequency that say they are a gift shop, that they sell t-shirts or shoes or miscellaneous products. And then they come in and get a business license as a gift shop. And then they turn around and apply for a tobacco retailer's license to the police department through our municipal code. And they may or may not abide by that 20% limit. And in many cases, it takes a lot of visiting the store and would take a lot of measurements to keep them in line with the zoning code rules, which is not efficient and it's been challenging for us to adequately regulate these types of uses. Our code does not talk about smoke shops. That's not a defined term in the zoning code, but the community does. So we get a lot of complaints about smoke shops from the community. And we found that our tools are very limited to address those concerns. And so we are proposing to update those limits. And while we do that, we would like to have some time where there's no new businesses coming in and gives us a pause so that we can get our, get our rules in order, come back to council with new regulations. And so this proposed urgency ordinance would prohibit new tobacconists or cigarette stores. Those are the ones the code defines as that 20% threshold during the moratorium. An existing legal tobacconist or cigarette stores could continue. So we're not stopping those businesses from continuing. And if a tobacco retailer is already established and a new business starts that wants to sell tobacco in that same location, like let's say somebody goes out of business or retires and they want to have a new business come in and take over their shop, it would allow for that continuation. However, new locations, let's say it was a, sorry, I shouldn't have gotten myself into this, giving an example. If someone sells aquariums, then a tobacco retailer can't open in that location during the moratorium. We have included a exception for supermarkets that are over 20,000 square feet. We did analysis of existing supermarkets in town and found that true supermarkets do have large footprints, such as the 20,000 square foot. And more and more, we're seeing supermarkets not even sell tobacco products, but we did want to create room in case, you know, in case one came to town, they would be accepted from this, this temporary moratorium. Notice was mailed to the existing businesses that hold tobacco retailer's licenses. There are approximately 80 throughout the city. And if council were to adopt the moratorium, staff would be then reviewing our codes to evaluate appropriate regulations. We would do this in consultation with our city attorney's office. And we would like to initiate enforcement of non-compliant businesses, which there are many. And so if council has feedback about the carve-outs or, you know, the way the moratorium was constructed, we'd love to take that feedback from you, but proceed with the, starting the moratorium this evening to give us an opportunity to enforce and visit these sites, make sure that they're complying by laws. And we would return within 45 days to evaluate the need for an extension. And we could always make adjustments at that time if the council feels that it's important to. And then once the, you know, moratorium is running, we would really be robustly reviewing the appropriate regulations and bringing those back to the council, making a staff recommendation for updated code provisions. And so we would be returning by July, before your August recess, to revisit the timing of this moratorium. There are no fiscal impacts, other than staff time, reviewing our codes and performing enforcement as part of our normal day-to-day duties. And so we are recommending that tonight you adopt this urgency ordinance, enacting the 45-day moratorium, which again, would only apply to the sale of tobacco-related products in new locations, as well as new tobacconist or cigarette stores during the moratorium period. And we're available should you have any questions. Thank you.
So at this point in time, I'm going to move to clarifying questions. After clarifying questions, I'll open the public hearing and hear from our public on this item, and then we'll proceed accordingly. But right now, let's take clarifying questions, please. Councilmember Bowen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Avalon, for the presentation. I love, I love seeing the proactiveness of staff on this issue. And I want to ask about some of the feedback or concerns you're hearing from the community that identified this loophole and why there's this sense of urgency around it.
Yes, and I might ask the city attorney to help me clarify if there's a way to adopt a moratorium without using that urgency ordinance language? Or is that just part of how you adopt a moratorium?
It is part of how we adopt a moratorium is that there's an urgent public health and safety need, which exists here.
Yeah, so in order to create that pause that we discussed, the urgency ordinance is the tool to do so. And so the concerns we've been hearing from the community have to do with not just concerns about tobacco products in particular, but more about the attractiveness that these types of stores can bring for people maybe loitering around or smoking outside the store, where it then creates, you know, a smoke nuisance for neighboring businesses or could even prevent customers from other businesses wanting to come and shop because it kind of creates an unwelcome environment. And then also, you know, some of these stores have products that aren't just related to tobacco, but maybe other controlled substances that aren't considered as family-friendly. And so we receive a lot of concerns when we see one pop up. And the tone of the emails that we receive in the community preservation team is like, how did this happen? Why does San Leandro allow these to come into town? There's so many of them now. Can't you stop, you know, the proliferation? That seems to be the main concern we're hearing. Thank you.
Councilmember Blue?
Mr. Mayor, kind of a two-part question. Thank you, Avalon, and thank you to staff for bringing this to our attention. And I think anytime we're talking about improving public health outcomes, it's a good day. My question is, are you looking at a possible, I don't know if it's included in what you're thinking here. Are you looking at a possible remedy for stores that are already in existence under this loophole that go out of business? Is that going to be part of what you bring back to the council? Or would that be a separate conversation?
Yeah, we will consider all options. So traditionally with zoning code rules, if somebody is legally established and they came in under a code and they were legally operating, then they have the right to continue. But when they leave, there's usually a six-month period. But when they leave, there's usually a six-month period where unless the same thing happens, then usually the new laws come into effect. So typically, we aren't affecting existing legal operators when we do change our codes. However, there are legal tools that can be explored that can phase out undesired uses. That's something we'll discuss with the legal team and bring back options for consideration. And we are having a lot of retailers, I'll say some retailers, who may not be fully legally operating, and so that would be a different situation.
Thank you. And part two is also, would that include like looking at environmental controls? For example, one of the things that's come up in the past with some of my constituents is the LED lights around the windows that light up the whole business above other businesses, et cetera. Is your review going to include those peripheral things, or really just the zoning and the permitting process?
The peripheral would also be part of our review and enforcement. So I would suggest that there are a lot of signs that are out there that don't comply with our current rules. So part of it is enforcing what's on the books today, and then looking at if we need to add to those rules.
Thank you.
Councilmember Viveros Walton, please.
Councilmember Ballou took a lot of my questions, but I'm specifically interested in enforcement of the businesses that use the loophole to essentially sell tobacco products under another license, and then they added tobacco afterward. But I'm also concerned with other types of enforcement actions like signs and all of the other stuff that comes with it, but a lot of my questions were already answered.
Councilmember Bowen, coming back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up, so I understand Councilmember Ballou's question, and Avalon, if you can clarify, if a business currently has zoning for tobacco sales and they move out of that building, do they have to reapply for that license in a different location, or would they be able to take that location because they're forced out of their current location?
So the way the moratorium's worded, it does not allow for transfer between locations, in part because the way the code works is if one person moves out, a new one could move in. So there's that allowance. But if one moved to a new location and then another one moved in, we have a net increase. And so the way it's worded, for the first 45 days, there are no exceptions, but if it's the council's desire, we could look at that when we return for an extension. We'll take direction from the council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, it's 8:28, and I'm opening the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, there's no public comments in person, and I have one online.
Would you please proceed?
Morgan, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Morgan McRose. I run the downtown community benefit district, and this is something that's a big concern for us. We've had one tobacco retailer take over a massive space in Pelton Plaza, right next to our codatorium, which is for youth, and IT, which is a boba shop that is primarily patronized by teens. And so I hope that this ordinance, if possible, can also restrict the proximity to places where youth gather. And I do share Avalon's concern about there being operators who took out a license under one pretense, but are operating under a completely other reality. I just went through Google Maps and searched the city's database for tobacco retailers and was seeing if those match what's coming up on Google Maps for smoke shops. And only two of the seven smoke shops that I looked up had business licenses for tobacco resale, at least on the public search tool at the city's website. So I hope that part of this is really going out there and seeing who's operating illegally. Because in my mind, even if they have less than 20% of their floor with tobacco products, if the name of your shop is Smoke Shop, then I think we know what you're trying to sell. So I appreciate the council taking swift action on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my comment. I'll try to keep it brief. I'll say, I generally agree with the intent behind this urgency ordinance. I'm not a smoker myself. I don't very much care for smoking. I do consider it nuisance. I hate standing next to smokers in front of stores and at city benches and at buses. They're generally annoying with their smoke and inconsiderate, and I always sometimes consider carrying around, you know, a spray with a noxious smell in it, just that I can spray them with, you know, something that smells just as bad as their cigarette smoke. But I don't, because I try to be considerate of my fellow San Leandro citizens. But I do have a concern about this urgency ordinance. I have a feeling like this thing is of the form, or comes to the council in the form of just like a temporary thing, and it'll just keep getting extended and extended and extended. And even though it's being positioned as a 40-day, 45-day moratorium, it'll turn into a permanent, never-ending moratorium. And I would love to see some kind of language here that says this can only be renewed three times, unless it then becomes a permanent part of the city code, or, you know, that there aren't like, we're not going to see this being extended every month and for the rest of this year or whatever. And then the other thing, that I don't quite like the characterization of what these retailers are doing as sort of taking advantage of a loophole. The current zoning code is very specific about 20% of floor space or display area, or 75% of gross receipts. The city council that passed the current ordinance had to have considered what would happen if a retailer claimed to only sell 15% of its gross receipts, or 50% of its gross receipts, or 73% of its gross receipts, or 12% of the floor space, or 18% of the floor space. Let's not characterize, you know, honest retailers in our city as trying to induce...
Your time is up. Cynthia, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. So thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to say that I recommend as part of this review and development of zoning codes and these ordinances to include potential programs like takeback of tobacco waste, or even fees for current and new businesses that are selling tobacco products to help mitigate for environmental impacts, like the toxic litter in the form of cigarette butts on our streets that end up in our storm drains, and ultimately the ocean. Also, the e-cigarettes that may qualify, or to my knowledge, do qualify as hazardous waste. So I would love to see some verbiage with regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just kidding. Mr. Mayor, there's no more public comment? Oh, yeah, I'm correct.
It is 8:34, and I'm closing the public hearing, and I'm bringing it back to councilmembers for additional discussion. Councilmember Bowen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question. Avalon, or the city attorney, in terms of the number of smoke shops we can have in the city, is it possible to have a limit on the quantity of them on any business, or a smoke shop, or otherwise?
Limit on the quantity? I don't believe I have it. I think we would want to double-check some of the research on that first, Councilmember Bowen, but I believe we can have those answered within the 45-day period. But we'll add that to the list of answers, specific to tobacconists, understanding that there's an interplay with federal law related to tobacco sales. We don't have an answer at this moment in time, but we'll research it in time for the 45-day period. We'll have those answers prior to the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ballou.
Mr. Mayor, unless there are other comments, I'd like to move this item.
So I've got a motion by Councilmember Ballou. Councilmember Viveros Walton.
I'd like to second that.
And I've got a motion, a second, from Councilmember Viveros Walton. And then Councilmember Bowen, did you have further discussion?
A comment, because I tried to limit it to questions previously. One of the, the shop in Pelton Plaza, I just wanted to highlight an interesting thing to explore around the location of these shops, because it would be hard. You like boba. I also like boba, so people go to IT. But next to IT is Codatorium, which is a coding academy for children. So it's literally a business meant to attract children. And so just thinking through of like, what one of those smoke shops is adjacent to in terms of its proximity, and that would be great. I mean, I'm supportive of closing loopholes and figuring out what is best in terms of enforcement. I appreciate that the next 45 days, we'd be able to actually go in and take the time to, and resources to assess who is and is not following the ordinance. And so I think that this is something that would be to the benefit of the community and public health, especially for our youth.
Okay, so at this point in time, looking around for further discussion, questions, dialogue, seeing none, let's vote on the motion by Councilmember Ballou that was seconded by Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
All votes are in. Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Ballou, yes. Councilmember Bowen, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. And Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes 7-0.
So at this point in time, because we went straight through and barely had time for a break, it was quite a long closed session, we've almost effectively been working for three hours straight. So I'm going to put us into a 10-minute recess, or 10 minutes is defined as be back here at 8:50. That's 13 minutes. Or 10 minutes is defined as be back here at eight fifty. That's 13 minutes. Or 10 minutes is defined as be back here at eight fifty. That's 13 minutes. Or 10 minutes is defined as be back here at eight fifty. That's 13 minutes. Okay, we're reassembling. There has been a request by a couple of council members to reorder my agenda. And I think that that makes a lot of sense in light of the fact we still have public here for the item with respect to our police chief contract. So unless I've got objection from my council, I'd like to take item 10B. The employment agreement with our chief and the adoption of a resolution to approve the master salary schedule, I'd like to take that now. Looking around, do I see any objections? Seeing no objections, we do have a quorum. And so we're gonna proceed with item 10B at this time. And then we will go immediately after that and pick up our item nine A. So we've got, um, is it 10A? Let's just describe this. As a case maybe. So we've got item 10B to adopt two resolutions, one authorizing city manager execute an employment agreement with police chief, um, Angela Everett, and adopt a resolution to approve a master salary schedule. We have human resources director Emily, Emily? Director Hung, uh, to introduce the item. Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So in accordance with Government Code, Section 54953, Section C3, I'm here to, um, provide an oral summary of the recommendations for salary and benefits paid to the police chief. Um, the action item before you is a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an employment agreement with Angela Everett to serve as police chief. The proposed agreement includes a three-year term with an annual salary of $303,060, which the city council previously established in April of 2023 for the classification of police chiefs. There are no changes or adjustments to that salary. Future salary increases will align with those that have been already approved for the Police Management Association in their MOU. So adjustments are, um, effective each July, um, with the first one being four percent in this year, 2024, three percent in 2025, three percent in 2026. And the chief will also match the San Leandro Police Management Associations in retirement and benefits. So those are all aligned. The, the police chief's salary range is reflected on a new salary schedule format. Um, as part of this item, staff is also seeking approval of a separate resolution to approve a citywide master salary schedule. So historically, the city council has always approved salary schedules by bargaining group or by individual classification. Um, this new master format is required by CalPERS so that all city classifications appear on one document. There are no salary adjustments being implemented with this new format. It's merely a compilation of all the previously approved city council actions in this one master document. So going forward, anytime there's any future salary adjustments or classification changes, we will present it in this new format. So that summarizes, um, the recommendations, and I can answer any questions you may have.
So council members, I'll turn to you to see if we've got any questions. Seeing no questions, I'm gonna move to public comment at this time.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have public comment in person and online.
Please proceed. In person.
Mitch Heidemann?
And how many do we have?
We have seven in person, and I see three hands up online.
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm really excited by our new chief police and, um, removing the word interim and having her be permanent. I think that, um, having watched lots of chief, police chiefs all around the country for the last several years, what we've at least read about and heard from her so far, I'm really impressed with. I also want to say from the meeting that, um, Council, Councilmember Bowen had the other night, I really appreciated that, that the chief said that while hiring, that she's not going to, um, lower the bar for who she's going to bring in. I do greatly and deeply appreciate that. So I just want to say congratulations and thank you all for helping to make this happen.
Thank you. Tim Holmes?
Hi, Tim Holmes. I live at, uh, 659 Broadmoor. I just wanted to also voice my support, um, for the interim police chief, Angela Everet, I'm not sure of his name, I apologize, uh, for our permanent police chief. I say this based on her credentials, her professional history, her reputation, um, on my trust in our city manager's judgment, on the advice of the recruiter, who was very adamant and quite clear in her report that were she able to get us the best possible candidate for San Leandro Police Chief, that candidate would be our interim police chief. I encourage you to trust your city manager. I encourage you to take that consult at her word and to move forward with hiring the interim chief as our permanent, uh, next police chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Lopez?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of meeting, uh, Chief Everett at several different events. And, um, I think we should all give her our great support. I'm really impressed. And, um, I'm just glad she's here. Welcome.
Thank you. Jenny Chang?
Hi, good evening, um, city council and mayor. So I just, same thing, I just want to give support to Chief Everett. She says a heartache. That's how you remember her, her last name, Everett. So I thought that was really, really helpful. I had the privilege of meeting her, um, I'm on the, uh, Community Police Review Board. I'm not representing them in any way, but I'm speaking as an individual. But I had a pleasure meeting her on a one-on-one. And it just made me, she really was transparent about everything. I like how she made the meeting really informal. She's like, you can ask whatever. Um, I thought that that was really, really cool. Um, yeah, so please, please, uh, approve this contract. Uh, San Leandro needs stability, especially within our police department, and I think Angela's the job, the job. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Bob Bailey?
Hi, honorable mayor and city council, city manager. My name is Bob Bailey. I'm the chair of the Community Police Review Board. I'm here to speak in support of approving the contract to make, uh, Angela Everett our new regular, non-interim chief. I hesitate to use the word permanent because that doesn't seem to be working. Um, but, uh, the, the city manager shared with the Community Police Review Board, uh, at our April meeting, the rationale for expediting this hire. And, and the reasons were very compelling. First and foremost, as Jenny mentioned, was the need to really stabilize the leadership in the police department. Second, Chief Everett's experience is extensive and with multiple law enforcement agencies in the Bay Area. Three, our commitment to police reform and community engagement. Four, the city's recruiter confirmed at our CPRB meeting that Chief Everett's qualifications would make her highly attractive candidate for many other cities. And we'd be at a high risk of losing her. We'd take advantage of the opportunity we have right now. And, um, proceeding, by the way, now with expedited hire means we're saving $40,000 in a recruiter fees. So, um, the, uh, most important, the chief checked all the boxes of a number of attributes that were, uh, developed at a CPRB meeting with lots of, uh, public input. Integrity, transparency, able to build trust, trustworthy, approachable, experience in a multicultural community, uh, community-first thinking, being able to continue on our path of reform by building bridges with the rank and file as well as the community. And lastly, to focus on constitutional and non-discriminatory policing and continuous improvement of our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Katsakabe? After this, we will go to online public comment.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mike Katsakabe. Um, I think I'm gonna be joining a chorus of voices here in welcoming our new chief. Kudos to Fran for her role in getting Angela to agree to work for us as our police chief. I am very grateful to that. And I'm even more grateful that given how we have treated a recent police chief, that Angela is willing to take on the challenges that she is sure to face in the police department. Whether that is addressing the pretty steady decline in clearance rates of our police department over the last 10 years, or getting to the bottom of why you're four times more likely to be stopped by police in San Leandro if you're black than if you're white. So I am very optimistic and very hopeful and very pleased that Angela has accepted the role. And I look forward to her term as chief of police for San Leandro. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we will go to online public comment now. Douglas Balding, you may unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, as a preamble, I want to welcome Lieutenant Antoinette Turner. And, uh, just give out, um, my, my appreciation and love for Chief Pridgen, who, who I believe recruited, uh, Lieutenant Turner. Uh, it's really good to see, um, that officer on board too. For anyone who's not familiar with Chief, um, Everett by now, and by the way, if you want to remember, uh, you can say it the way the SGA kids would say it, ayy! Uh, I would encourage anyone to go to the, the, uh, city webpage and find, um, Chief, uh, Everett's introduction. And I had the honor of serving on the city manager's interview panel last week. And I think I speak for the fellow, uh, panel members when I say there's, there's really a one-word summary, and it is impressive. Chief Everett, uh, Everett is a daughter of San Leandro who has experienced discrimination as a youth. For example, being pulled over more than once for driving while black. And not only does she have a commitment to public safety, but to reforming our police department and repairing the community relations and to ensuring that the excellence of the department. Um, so, uh, you know, Mike kind of alluded to it, but I, I, I'm just gonna be clear about the elephant in the room. Oh, by the way, it's nice to see all the activists in San Leandro come out to support the chief. I wonder where, um, Councilmember Baloo's, uh, email nation is tonight. Uh, so to the old guard in SLPOA, to those cowboy cops, uh, I say, get out of the way. If you don't like what's happening in San Leandro, go fish. Find a job somewhere else. We're gonna defend this chief. We learned some things from the, from the fiasco with Chief Pridgen. Uh, so we'll, we'll be prepared. We'll do a better job. We'll do an effective job of protecting our chief and keeping our chief permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for taking my comment this evening. I want to congratulate the new police chief on taking, on, uh, taking this position. Thank you for joining our city. Uh, but I, and I wish you a very long tenure. But I also want to acknowledge, and I think everyone knows, that this is not an easy city to work in. Uh, I hope and I invite you to, uh, as maybe one of your first orders of business, to take a look at sanleandro.org/449/crimestats, where we have a lot of statistics being published about crime in our city. They haven't been updated for the last few months. The latest stats are just from January and February of this year. But crime in the city for the last couple of years has been stable, if not increasing. And clearance rates, as one of the speakers, um, remarked, are, are quite low. You know, homicide, they're decent, but that's what gets the most attention. Forcible rape, maybe 12%, maybe 30%, depending how you count. Robbery, 32% clearance rate. Aggravated assault, under 50%. Burglary, motor vehicle theft, larceny, all around 7% to 10% clearance rates. We, we have some real challenges in this city, and I hope that you can tackle them by updating the crime statistics, publishing clearance rates, and then, you know, taking charge of, uh, some of the cowboy cops that, that we have in the city. As I always do, you know, when it comes time to talk about compensation. As I always do, you know, when it comes time to talk about compensation, I do want to acknowledge that you are taking one of the more highly paid roles in our city. I think in three years, based on the salary increases, you'll be making around $350,000 a year, putting aside all of the benefits and vacation times and healthcare and pension and all that stuff. And I really hope that you take this money and put it to good use and be a good servant to the city. Lastly, I noticed that in your LinkedIn profile, you are giving yourself the title of Chief of Police. I think until the city council votes, you are still interim chief of police. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo West, you may unmute yourself.
Yes, well, a lot of kissing tonight. I reject the appointment of yet another black chief of police. The experience around the Bay has been disastrous. San Francisco, we know the situation in San Francisco, Oakland, and yes, in San Leandro. There's vandalism, restaurant windows have been broken, senior citizens' buildings have been broken into, to rob it and also shutter windows. And in the first five months of this year, there is already a record number of murder. So yes, one honest observer can figure out that there's an element of racial solidarity with criminals. And we cannot tolerate that. I'm going to speak out and I'm going to be kissing anybody because the chief of police, whoever it is. And the city is building a monument to one of these criminals. And we can extend that to the Alameda County Attorney General. There is a racial solidarity with criminals, and nobody wants to acknowledge it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there's no more public comment.
Okay, so with that, I will close public comment. And bring it back to my councilmembers, Councilmember Baloo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Everett, it's not official yet, but I imagine it probably will be in a minute or two. I just wanted to say congratulations to you. Welcome to the San Leandro family. And I wanted to acknowledge our city manager. Fran, once again, you have used your superpower of finding talent to fill the executive position. So thank you for that. There was a lot that went into this, I'm sure, behind the scenes before it ever got to the official part where we saved money by not going to a recruiter. And thank you for answering the phone when she called. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move this item. Both resolutions.
Thank you. So I do have a motion from Baloo. Councilmember Azavito, please.
Yes, I would like to second it. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations. We had some very good meetings, and I look forward to working with you. And I look forward to doing a cleanup with you soon. And you'll know in a short time that, yeah, I'd love to clean up our city. It's really important. So welcome to our city and, yeah, looking forward to working with you.
So I'm going to go to Councilmember Viveros Walton, and then I'll come back to Councilmember Aguilar. So first, Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Chief Felicidades, we are so excited to have you on board. And I also wanted to extend that you have a partner. And I can't, I mean, I'm assuming for all of us, but you have a partner in us in ensuring that you're successful in your role. And we're here to support you, and we're here to make our city even better. Thank you so much, and we are so excited to have you on board. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Thank you, Chief, and trusting you to lead our city. I think, you know, once this is confirmed, you know, we have the opportunity to make history here, not only, you know, by confirming you, but also to have two African-American women leading our city. I just think this is something that is historic, something to celebrate. I look forward to working with you in whatever capacity. I think the CPRB and the community got it right. I think their selection speaks volumes. And I, you know, I know we've had some historical issues with our police department, but we're looking to move forward with you and transforming this police department to be one of the stellar departments in the county where folks want to come and work. And look forward to our continued relationship. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Simon, please.
Thank you, Chief. Wanted to welcome you on board. I had the pleasure of meeting with you and speaking with you. And as we talked about, why I came to council originally was the killing of Stephen Taylor by the San Leandro Police Department. And since then, the city has made some transformative measures, which has helped us. We're heading in the right direction. I want to thank Chief Abdul Pridgen for helping us start to get there. And you will be following up and taking us to the next level. So I'm here to support and know our full council is as well. There's a lot to do, and we will support you and Ms. Cameron as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowen, please.
I want to thank our city manager for making this decision to hire and bring Chief Everett into San Leandro. And I had the pleasure of having many robust conversations, and the most recent one at the Public Safety Meeting for District Five, and really was pleased and encouraged by the chief's ability to connect and listen and to take in as much information as she can, but also to be realistic and think through what she can do to take action next. I know that you're going to be innovative and lead in your own way, and I am really encouraged by your vision for San Leandro. And I know that you are going to be doing it with the department, with the community, with all of us. And I will echo what my other councilmembers have said. We are here in support and want to see you be successful.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion. Let's see, go back and look at my notes. We've got a motion by Baloo, a second by Azavito. So let's vote.
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Baloo, yes. Councilmember Bowen, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, so we're moving to item 9A. Now we're returning to our solid waste contract discussions, being presented by Assistant City Manager Janelle Cameron.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers and community. Tonight, I'm just here to kick off our presentation for solid waste procurement services. We have been at this for a little bit over a year, and I just want to thank the council for all of their support and providing feedback on this process. I want to recognize our team. I've had the pleasure of leading this negotiation team, which includes our Assistant Public Works Director, Nick Tom, Jennifer Aluta, our Parks Manager, our consultants from HFNH, Felicia Castaneda, and Rob Hilton, our city attorney for all of his review and support and being available whenever we need him, and especially our city manager for her guidance through this process. And also, I have to mention our partners, ACI and Waste Management. We've had a very robust negotiations process, and we've come together as a team to really get this done. And so today, we've got our presentation provided by Felicia Castaneda of HFNH. And we'll get your feedback and then be back next month with the contract. So I'll turn it over to Felicia.
Thank you, Janelle, for that introduction and congratulations. Thank you for having me here tonight, councilmembers, mayor. As Janelle mentioned, I am going to go over this long process that we've been through together to give you a summary and update of where we are in this solid waste services procurement. Again, as Janelle mentioned, we've been at this for about a year and a half, and we're reaching the end of this process. So it's very exciting. So what I'm going to go over today is just a little bit of an overview and background to just give us a reminder of where we've been and where we're going. And then I'm going to go over some of the changes that we're expecting to see in both the collection contract and the post-collection contract. I'll talk a little bit about some of the key business terms that we'll see in the agreements coming up, and then talk about the costs of these new services and the new contracts, as well as the impact to rates. And finally, end with some next steps that we can look forward to. So just a quick timeline. I'm not going to go over each and every one of these dates. We've come in front of you several times to provide updates throughout this process. We kicked this off, as I mentioned, last year in February, when you approved our procurement strategy to separate collection from post-collection. And so we've been working with two service providers to provide those different services. We put together requests for proposals for collection services that we sent out to ACI in September of last year. And then we put together a request for proposals for post-collection services that we sent to both ACI and Waste Management. And that was done at the end of last year. And since then, we've been reviewing those proposals and negotiating with both parties to put together a service package for the city. So again, today, we're going to be going over what those service packages look like. And then the goal is to have the contrast back to you in July. So the current collection services are provided by ACI, and those include the collection of solid waste, recyclable materials, and organic materials from homes and businesses within the ACI service area in San Leandro. So that's the area outside of the Oreloma Sanitary District. There are also customer service provisions in the agreement, as well as education and outreach. So these services will remain with some enhancements and some new services that I'll talk about in just a moment. Some particular enhancements for the new agreement include customer service enhancements to ensure that there's quick responses to customers and that issues are resolved quickly. We've also improved the requirements for education and outreach so that businesses can get more technical assistance to help them improve their recycling efforts at those businesses. And we've also worked to incorporate a lot of the beautification efforts that we heard were concerns from council in our previous meetings. So we've included some programs related to the move-in and move-out of multifamily businesses, the pickup of litter throughout the city, and making sure that those beautification efforts are addressed. Some other services that will remain, customers will still have the same flexibility to choose which container sizes they have. So customers can choose from carts, 20-gallon, 32-gallon, 64, 96-gallon carts. Bins will also be available for the larger generators, such as multifamily complexes and businesses. There will be an inclusion of a low-income rate for folks who qualify for that. And so all of those are included in the proposed service package. So this is what's exciting, are these new collection services. There's a number of items here. A lot of these programs are very nuanced. I'm going to do my best to just provide an overview of these. But when we get to questions, I'm happy to dive in deeper to any of these programs if you'd like to learn more. So I'm going to kick it off with the bulky item collection. So there is a bulky item collection program that currently exists. What we've added in this new agreement is increasing service for both single-family and multifamily residents here in the city. So single-family currently gets one bulky pickup per year. We're going to up that to two. And the multifamily program is currently one pickup per year for the multifamily complex using a 20-yard bin. Now that will change so that multifamily, each multifamily unit can have a bulky item pickup, and they can schedule that directly with ACI so it doesn't have to go through the property owner. So it makes it a little easier for multifamily tenants to get that service. The community cleanup event is a program for the city to request a big dumpster, so the 20-yard or 40-yard containers, for cleanup events. So if the city wanted to sponsor a creekside cleanup or a park cleanup, they could request a 20-yard bin. ACI would bring that out. You would fill it up, and then they would take that away. So this allows the city some flexibility to use that service to enhance those beautification efforts throughout the city. We have seen an increase in recycling, and as there's more technical assistance to businesses, we do anticipate that going up even more. So part of this service package does also include increased capacity for more recycling. ACI has added half a route to accommodate that increased recycling service. The enhanced street litter can service, so ACI currently services the street litter cans throughout the city. What's different here is we've incorporated a more proactive approach to monitoring and servicing those containers to help prevent overflow, to help prevent illegal dumping. In addition, ACI will take over the service of the big-belly containers that are currently existing in the downtown area, as well as they'll be adding some additional big-belly containers into the downtown footprint. So you'll be seeing more of those, as well as more of the dual stream, the solid waste and recyclable containers next to each other. Diversion services at city events. So this is particular for city-designated events. For up to six per year, ACI will provide full-service diversion services. So that includes bringing containers into the event, coordinating with event organizers, making sure those containers are emptied throughout the event so there's no overflow, getting them disposed or processed, providing some education, and making sure the vendors there know how to properly sort their materials or make sure the materials are getting in the right containers. Almost through here, we have additional services to Washington Plaza as well. So this is really specifically aimed at the Washington Plaza area and downtown. It's a high-traffic area. There are some enclosures there that have seen, we've seen consistent issues relating to illegal dumping and litter. And so in order to address that issue, we're going to be adding things like lights to those enclosures, key card entries so we can keep track of who's coming in and out, make sure that the businesses are getting charged properly for the amount that they're using the services. It will also increase the service so that we can prevent overflow of those containers and include some other benefits, such as power washing, so we can keep that area clean for the public. Finally, we've also added a textile recycling program. So twice per year, residents will be able to put textiles out on the curb for collection. This will be during designated collection weeks in the year. So they'll be able to put those textiles out on the curb. ACI will come and collect them and work with their vendor to make sure those textiles get recycled. All right, moving on to post-collection services. So this is what happens to materials after they're collected. So what happens, you know, once they're removed from the curb from your home or business. Currently, these post-collection services are provided by ACI. The difference, the big difference here is that we will now be splitting these services. And so ACI will be providing the transfer and transport of solid waste, CND, and the organic materials to waste management processing facilities, where waste management will then take those materials and dispose or process of them. ACI will remain holding on to the recyclables materials processing, which they currently do. So that's how we're splitting the services there. And then we do have a couple additional services that we've added here as well. They are supporting the city with the 1383 compost procurement requirement. So this is a requirement under state law that the city has to procure a certain amount of recovered organic waste products, mainly compost. And so the waste management will be assisting the city in meeting that compost procurement requirement. And it is an annual requirement. Another additional service is that waste management has offered community self-hall days. So one time, with the option of more per year, residents of San Leandro can take up to two cubic yards of material to the Davis Street Transfer Station to dump for free. And so that'll be a service offered for San Leandro residents through this contract. Key business terms here. So this is something that we've talked to you all a little bit about before. We are looking at a 10-year base term with extension options. So it would be up to the city to determine if they wanted to extend those agreements for a certain for a certain amount of time. In the post-collection, it would be a two-year extension. And then for the collection, it would be tied to the post-collection extension. As I mentioned, this does give the city the ability to mix and match services from different proposers, and that allowed us to get competitive pricing. In terms of compensation for the contractors, there will be an annual index rate adjustment, which is similar to what you see now. So that's adjusting rates based on a CPI. Recyclables rate adjustments will reflect reflect the quality of the processed material, and some of the revenue that's generated from selling those recyclables will come back to the city and to ratepayers. And then it does include a cap on annual adjustments as well. So that ensures that there won't be exorbitant adjustments year over year. The agreements also include indemnification and insurance to ensure that the city is covered, you know, and covered with all their risk, including things like circular indemnification and pollution liability insurance. So in terms of the rate impact, we are anticipating that these enhanced and new service contracts will increase rates approximately 2% to 5%. This is largely due to the enhancements to the existing services and the new services provided to residents and businesses. So we actually were looking at a very small, under 1% increase without any of the new services that I talked about. And so most of these are going to be new programs, and that's what's what's being funded through here. We are still finalizing some of the cost forms and finalizing some of the rates. So these numbers may adjust slightly. We'll be doing this in the next couple of weeks, finalizing these numbers, and that'll determine where where in the 2% to 5% this range falls. My last slide here gets into a little bit of the details about those new programs. So as I mentioned, the base rate for the new the new agreements without any of the new programs actually results in a decrease in the rates of about 4%. And so that base rate does include it includes all of those current services that we're seeing that I spoke about. It also does include a city reimbursement. So a study was done to evaluate the direct and indirect costs of these contracts on the city, looking at things like the cost for use of city property, the cost of managing the contracts. And so those costs, reimbursements for those costs are included in this base rate as well. And then each of the new programs, I've listed the costs here and then the anticipated percentage rate increase that you'll see. So these are all incremental costs and rate impacts. In total, all of those new programs and enhancements come out to about a 6.8% increase, but coupled with that reduction of 4%, we're only looking at about a 2.6% increase at this And just to clarify, this chart shows the monthly rate and the how that might change for a 32-gallon container, which is the most common service level for single-family residents. So this would be look a little bit different for a larger container or a different service So finally, as I mentioned, we are really close to the end of this process. We will be working over the next couple of weeks to finalize negotiations with both ACI and Waste Management. We've nailed down all of the, you know, really big material provisions of the contract. So it's really just fine-tuning those those contracts and making sure we're in agreement and all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Again, we'll also be completing the rate model to get a very final number on that rate impact. And then we'll be bringing final agreements to council for approval on July 1st. And that I'm going to stop there and open it up for questions.
As a reminder, this is an informational item. So we'll just be exploring, discussing, there will be no action taken at the end of this item. So we'll begin with questions. Councilmember Yvetos Walton.
Thank you. A couple of questions. I know that parts of the city are serviced by different companies. So all residents of San Leandro will have all these amenities, including the the additional services, whether they're being serviced by ACI or Waste Management, or how will that look like?
So the programs that I mentioned here are only only available to the the customers who are going to be serviced by ACI in the current service area. So this contract just covers that area. So the portion of San Leandro that is serviced, that's in the Oreloma Sanitary District, is serviced by Waste Management under a separate contract. And so this this contract won't impact the services that you you'll see in that part of the town.
So you said will not impact?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe this is a question for the city manager. Are we looking at the services, waste waste collection services in areas not serviced by ACI? Or how is that looking like in terms of schedule?
So, no, there would not be, well, might be a legal question, but I don't think we we can subsidize another service area that isn't covered by the city's service area. So whatever Oreloma sets those rates at, they define the service level that those residents receive.
Got it.
And the rates come with those service delivery.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Just moving on, and I know that you answered a lot of my questions earlier today, but one thing that I did want to bring up was a little bit of the complexity in multifamily housing in terms of bulky pickups. My concern is that there's a lot of turnover, or there may be some turnover in specific units, or one resident who moves out, they use their once-a-year bulky pickup, but the new resident won't be able to take advantage of that until the following year. So that's just something that I want to alert to kind of figure out a plan so that it's I don't know if it's like number of pickups per building and try to figure out a way so that a new resident isn't stuck for a whole year without being able to use their bulky pickup.
Yeah, and I did I did look into this a little bit more after our conversation. And so the way that this program has been working in other jurisdictions and that we anticipate it working here is that the number of pickups per multifamily complex will be based on the total number of units. So a 20-unit building will get 20 pickups. And so it's it's unlikely that all of those are used throughout the year. And so what ACI will do is they'll keep track of the total number of pickups that have been scheduled for that building. So if, you know, one unit or two units ends up using two instead of just one, it'll end up working out by the end of the year.
Appreciate you researching that in. My other question, and it's more of, actually, that's more of a comment, so I'll just save that for the for later. Interested in a little bit more about the Washington. Let me just look up the Washington Plaza beautification. So I know you mentioned that ACI will be taking on servicing the big the existing 18 current existing 18 big-belly containers. In addition to, you've identified some areas where you'd want to. Are you replacing existing hippo containers, or are you adding on to the existing hippo container? So now we'll have more trashcans total net?
There will be more big bellies in total. And so there are specific areas in the downtown footprint that have been identified as high-traffic areas that could benefit from additional big-belly containers. So we'll be adding those in there, and each of those units will be a recycling container and a solid waste container.
Okay. I know that the hippo containers, the ones that kind of flow in and out and they kind of just open, they've been, folks go through them and kind of disperse trash on the sidewalk. So that's been a concern of downtown merchants and community members who walk around. And then also, just to clarify, currently, the big-belly containers are serviced by SLEA, correct? But you're this contract would actually take over the servicing of the containers?
Correct.
And then, let's see. That's it for now. I'll pass it on to the rest of my colleagues.
Okay, so we've got Councilmember Bowen next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Can we go to the slide of the new services?
This one or the previous one?
Yes, what? Yes, great. I'm incredibly excited about these new services, and I really appreciate the long process and the work you all have put into making sure that our feedback and the feedback you're hearing from the community is is part of this final post-to-final version. Can I asked this when we were having our one-on-one, and I wanted to follow up about it, and so that we could understand about the service deliverables that are promised. Can you speak to how it's great to have new services, but we want to make sure that residents actually do know about it, and that we can make sure that they'll actually be delivered upon?
Yeah, so the education and outreach is one of those programs that, you know, there are education and outreach programs in the current agreements. But what we've done in these new agreements is we've enhanced those requirements to really ensure that the messages are getting out to residents, particularly around these new programs. So there will be a transitional campaign that ACI provides so that any of these new services are going to be highlighted highlighted at the start of of this contract. And then on an ongoing basis, ACI will be required to create an annual education and outreach plan that's reviewed by the city. And so the city can work and collaborate with ACI to identify priorities that they'd like to educate the community on. And so that could be some of these programs, or it could be, you know, related to contamination. But there are specific provisions in there to really enhance that communication with the community about these programs and services.
And so after the plan is presented, do we also get a snapshot of whether or not we achieve those deliverable goals? Did the number of residents that utilize these programs? Were the outreach efforts effective? What else could we do for next time?
Yeah, absolutely. So there will be, there are some robust reporting requirements that ACI will be required to submit, and so those will be quarterly reports. So you'll get a lot of that information on these outreach efforts quarterly. And then through through the annual plan, like I mentioned, the city will have an opportunity to review that and to discuss how the plan was the prior year, if there are things that they want to continue or discontinue, things that they'd like to improve upon. So it is meant to be a collaborative approach with ACI to really ensure that the programs that are getting that are put in place are effective and not just what we hope is happening.
Right, I'm incredibly excited for it. I hope that our residents can fully utilize these. And then I had one more question, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this before. For ACI in San Leandro, can low-income residents and senior residents apply for the 15% discount?
So it just applies to low-income residents. So this, you know, if seniors are also low-income, then they can, of course, apply. And it'll be based off of the same criteria of the PG&E CARES program. So if you apply for on that income level, then you would receive that discount.
So just for low-income residents?
Correct.
At this point in time, I'll go to Councilmember Bresvita.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions. First question is, have have you have we looked into a voucher program? I know they're doing it in unincorporated areas like in Castor Valley and different areas. Have we looked into it for this?
Yeah, so that's the what I was mentioning before is the self-hall day. So, yeah, so it is, I avoided calling it a voucher program because the way that we're looking at implementing it is more of a community cleanup day or a community self-hall day is what we'd like to call it. And so it would be one day per year that residents from San Leandro can bring their material to Davis Street. So they wouldn't necessarily need a physical voucher, but they would still be able to benefit from that. And there is opportunity to increase the number of days that this is offered to residents, just depending on on the cost sensitivity of that, so.
Another question. I'm pushing to lock up all the dumpsters in San Leandro, all the strip malls and shopping centers. How much is that going to impact the rates for community? It shows that it's going to go up between 2% and 5%. How much would that impact? It's a big issue in San Leandro. We got garbage all over the place by the dumpsters.
Yeah, so some of the part of the additional bulky collection program actually does allow capacity for ACI to pick up illegally dumped materials as well. And so the way that the program is structured is ACI will have specific routes that are scheduled to go pick up both the scheduled bulky items and then any excess capacity they have. I requested the city, if there are materials that the city would like ACI to pick up that have been illegally dumped, ACI can go and pick those up as well. So that is included in that additional bulky program, the first the first line item there. So it adds about a 3.2% impact on the rates. Again, overall, we're still seeing a smaller rate adjustment because the base rate results in a decrease in rates.
What about them unlocking the dumpsters? Or or does the business owner unlock the dumpsters themselves, or does ACI come unlock the dumpsters? How would that work out?
There is an option, a service option that ACI offers to provide locks for service. So there is a current rate for that. So a customer would pay a rate for a lock, and then ACI would provide that, and it would keep the bin locked, and ACI would maintain a key so they could open it up. So it is a service that's offered at an additional cost for customers.
And I really like the, oh, well, this is more comments. Okay, I'll get back. Okay, that's all my question. Oh, wait, so, yeah, so ACI is 60% of San Leandro, and Waste Management's about 40%, right?
Correct.
Okay. So ACI is going to two bulk pickups a year. AC Waste Management had that, already had that. But you guys do recycling every week, and Waste Management does it every other week, right? Okay, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Simon, please.
Thank you. My question, similar to Councilmember Azvedo, as far as the locks go, so can you clarify the dumpsters that are behind the shopping centers? Are those required to be locked now?
There's, to my understanding, and I don't know if staff wants to help with this, there is not a requirement for them to be locked, but it is an optional service. Sounds like no, no requirement for those dumpsters to be locked.
Okay, is that is that a requirement the city can place on business owners to lock their dumpsters?
So that would be a legal question. So I'm going to come to city attorney and say, have you had the opportunity to research that?
We have not. It's something that I think we could talk with the planning department about, related to how the interplay with municipal code, unconditional use permits, et cetera, and existing requirements in some CUPs that do require cleanliness and maintaining property that it be maintained as clean. So we can definitely look into it further, and we'll have discussions with our consultant and staff.
Okay, and then checking our neighboring agencies to see what they do if they're locking. I think there was an issue at Palma Plaza, which is not ACI. I mean, it was Waste Management, Oreloma, and I believe there's a locking requirement somewhere. So it'd be good to look into that. And the second question, similar is enclosures around the dumpsters, because a lot of times there's dumpsters that are in the sidewalk or just out in the open. Does the city have any requirements to place that dumpsters be included included in an enclosure in shopping areas?
And that's another one I'll kick over to staff. I don't believe there's a requirement for that.
So at this point in time, I'm going to start with city attorney, to see if we can legally force property owners to have enclosures, and we can also involve others.
So for new development, I think we're hearing the comments. We want to talk about it in the context of a conditional use permit. Obviously, it impacts the development of the project and the cost of the project. As for existing, no, I don't believe we have a mechanism at this moment in time to require a solid enclosure, presumably one that's impermeable, concrete-based, rated, building permitted. There's not a current requirement.
Okay, it's not.
It could be part of a negotiation for a conditional use permit for a future project. And if that's a comment to staff, we'll discuss further with staff as to future, including potential zoning code changes, things like that. But it does impact development of projects.
Okay, but similar to looking into requiring to put locks on dumpsters, you can look into the requirement of requiring to put these dumpsters in an enclosure? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. My next question is the SB 1383 requirement. As far as the existing cans that people have at their homes, the different colored cans, are we in compliance there with those existing cans or any any future need to replace cans?
Yes, you are currently in compliance with the color requirements of 1383. The, and there's also labeling requirements. And so those, the requirements for 1383 actually allow for the full compliance with the color and labeling up to, to be implemented in 2032. So there is time. And so the requirements state that the company can't purchase out of compliant containers, but they can use up their existing stock. So and and then any new containers that they purchase must be compliant with 1383. So the city is largely compliant. And as they continue to replace containers, they will be updating the labels to make sure that they maintain compliance with 1383.
Okay, so we don't see a large container purchase coming in in the near future?
Correct, yeah. And that's one of the ways that we've actually managed to keep costs lows, low is because we're largely compliant with 1383. And these requirements aren't necessary until a few years down the line. We can avoid that large purchase and instead do it over time, which saves a little bit of money.
Thank you.
I think I've got just one question. Circler indemnification. Where does the risk lie? With the collecting entity or with the disposing entity?
That lies with the disposal entity. So the company that is the one that's actually disposing of that material.
In this case, that's Waste Management.
Correct.
At this point in time, I'd like to go to public comment on this item. Do we have any cards on item nine A?
I have no public speakers in person, but I have three online.
Let's go online, please.
Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
So hi, thank you. This is Ginny Madsen and I'm on behalf of all the multifamily residents, all the tenants in town. I want to say thank you for the bulky pickup. I've waited 20 years and it was worth waiting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Morgan McRose, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Morgan. I run the downtown benefit district. I'm excited to hear that they'll be adding more Big Bellies to downtown. Those are the chute based garbage cans that we initiated a few years ago. There's lots of places in the, in town that would benefit for them. But one of the questions I have is how they determine the location for the new Big Bellies in downtown. I would hope that maybe they would consult our team before placing them because we're down there cleaning downtown every day. And we know where they're needed most. The other question I had is about the, I'm glad to see about the improvements for the enclosures in downtown. But the one behind Joaquin Plaza is inadequate in size. I believe it's actually serviced daily now. And the number of restaurants that use that small enclosure, it overwhelms, it overwhelms the space. So I hope that there's consideration about expanding that enclosure. Finally, I'd like to say, I live in the Orloma district and constantly see illegal dumping all around our neighborhood. And I would suggest that if Public Works is having to clean up illegal dumping in the area serviced by Orloma, that they charge back to Orloma those services to encourage them to adopt these new additional services that ACI is bringing. Perhaps Councilmember Simon's companion enhancement, enhancements, since he actually sits on the Orloma board. These are long overdue, these, these increased services. And I'm glad to see that ACI is is open to providing them. I think that the rate increase is really minimal, given the increase in services. So thanks for all your work on this and I look forward to seeing a big improvement with regards to illegal dumping downtown and around the country, not the country, the city.
Thank you. Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
What's all this I'm hearing about Big Bellies? I'm trying not to take it personally. But I am hearing a lot about locking up dumpsters. As a legal matter, I guess that makes sense. I guess I could, I could support that. But I think it's important that we look at it from a human services standpoint. It's, the issue isn't dumping. It's not people, you know, trying to put things in the cans. I guess if you lock it up, they wouldn't be able to, but they would still dump their stuff outside the cans. The issue is that people are going into the garbage to take things out. And the reason they're doing that is that they are hungry. They are desperately hungry. So to de facto lock all the garbage cans seems kind of inhumane in my mind unless the city commits to better, more extensive food and feeding programs. So if you're going to move along those lines, then, you know, when, when can someone go grab breakfast, lunch, dinner? When can they go get, you know, the food that's distributed? Obviously, tho- those services currently exist, but they're not adequate if people are dumpster diving. You know, people don't dumpster dive just because they love to dumpster dive. They do it because they have a, an outstanding need. They do it because they're hungry. And we need to serve them. We need to treat them as our neighbors and make sure that they're not hungry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
At this point in time, I'll close public comment and come back to council member comments, discussions. Councilmember Blue.
Thank you, Mayor. As a newly elected official, years ago, I met with Jen Alletta on the subject of garbage and she was going to fill me in and she started talking. An hour and 15 minutes later, she was still talking and I was lost in space. And that was before SB 1383. I appreciate your common sense approach. I appreciate the stakeholders that are, came to the table with a common sense approach and all the work that you've done consistently. Both ACI and even though we're not talking about tonight Waste Management, it seems like garbage, we tend to stall on garbage in cities and city councils. There's more to know about garbage than, in fact, when I left that meeting, my comment was, I now know more about garbage than any human being should know. And so my hat's off to you for doing that. But I do appreciate your efforts to try and distill this into something that makes sense, serves the needs of many stakeholders. And I want to just add one editorial comment that this is another punch in the card of our efforts as a city to deal with sustainability. Our garbage partners are huge partners in sustainability. And I think that we can't let tonight go by without, without that being said and emphasized. So thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, question I forgot to ask, or maybe I missed it. As far as hazardous materials such as batteries and light bulbs, is there a special pickup or way to remove those from people's homes?
So there are household hazardous waste programs that are managed by the county that are available throughout Alameda County that are available to San Leandro residents. One specific program that is included in this, in the next collection agreement is related to used motor oil as well as kitchen oil. So that is a program where residents will be able to put out used motor oil for collection. They'll be able to put that out at the curb next to their containers for collection by ACI.
Okay, but as far as batteries and light bulbs, they cannot leave those out near their garbage can?
Those are not included in the curbside program, no. So those would be managed by the county program.
Okay, is that an additional service? Would that fall within, within one of your additional services to pick those up?
It would, it would be an additional service, something that we could discuss.
Okay, okay. And I do appreciate all the public comments on it. And this is a, you know, a big issue as Councilmember Azavito has been bringing up for years now, of the dumpsters and the trash out of the dumpsters and the public commenter about concern for the homeless. We all concerned, concerned for our homeless and we don't want them eating garbage. It's not healthy. It's not safe. So, and we don't want garbage laying, you know, throughout the neighborhoods or the shopping centers. I think we as a city has to come, we have to come to a, you know, comprehensive way to solve it. So I do think locking it is a good idea we should look into. And then also making sure, you know, helping our homeless so they do have something to eat. But eating garbage is not a good option for the homeless. Thank you.
Councilmember Viveros Walton, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Thank you to staff and thank you so much for all the work that went into this. Just in terms of the city sponsored events, I think one thing that I would like to ensure is that there is equitable distribution of where the special events that are going to be either sponsored by the city or where the city is a major sponsor that it touches in all the districts. And especially as we think about activating new spaces. I know that downtown holds a lot of events, but I think that there are, you know, the, the marina has a lot of special events. So I would like to see and ensure that there's equitable distribution of of these, of the events that would be covered under this contract. And then finally, I just wanted to ask a question around Vice Mayor, just kind of pulling the thread on Vice Mayor's question. I was recently going through our garage and separated all of our hazardous wastes and it's really hard to know. I went to the county and the county site and Hayward doesn't take all of it anymore, which was a recent change over the last couple of years. They gave me a list of other places. So i- is there a centralized outreach so that residents know where all of their waste can go, whether it's hazardous or not? Because it was, I went to three different places to be able to dispose of batteries, light bulbs, medications, paint. It, it, a normal, a person who is like, doesn't have a vehicle is not going to do all that. So maybe just putting that information up front in our community outreach. And I don't know if that falls within our department or our city, but it, it took me half a day to do all of that. So just thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up because I had not thought about that. Thank you.
Okay, so towards that end, I'll just wrap up with a couple of comments. I think it's pretty much everything's been covered. I do have a question for my fellow council member. The equitable distribution, I'm assuming would be within the ACI service territory. Fair enough, just to clarify. I, I do think that what we see here represents our city's commitment to sustainability. So I think that Councilmember Blue's point is really well taken. Something as simple as textiles manufacturing, manufacturing, recycling. And that's as far as I'm concerned, example of cutting, cutting edge thinking. We're really looking for ways to make sure that we're looking at the things that go into landfills that can be, can be kept out. I think our commitment to 1383 is, you know, second to none, as best as I can tell under this agreement. And so again, the commitment to sustainable practices because we know that organics are a primary source of ethane, of methane, that methane is far more dangerous than CO2. So I'm looking at the actions that we're taking and the contracts that we're developing service level requirements and saying it, it 100% demonstrates that commitment to sustainability. I think there are, there's nothing else on this item, so I'm going to close off this item and move us forward. Thank you to staff for all your hard work. I mean, it's been really nice, really, really nice. I will turn to my council and say, the remainder of our agenda is item 10C, item 11, and 12. So I look into council and saying it's 10 o'clock. I'm looking for a motion on extension. If you want to continue this at our next meeting, it's, I'm just, we end at 10. So let's see what kind of motion we can get, what kind of support we can get for what time period. Vice Mayor, please.
I'd like the motion to extend to 10:20 in order to finish item 10C. It's been on for almost a year now.
Okay, Councilmember Bowen.
Well, second that, I would also want, maybe can, I, I think your motion just included to get to 10C. Are we able to try to just complete the other action, the other items?
Well, yeah, the time is, it's a time specific, so it's 10:20 as of right now.
Okay, because it was stated specifically 10C. So I want to say.
So I am interpreting the motion to be, can we extend the time until 10:20? Is that the motion that is on the floor, Vice Mayor? And do I have the second for that motion?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote on that motion.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Certainly.
Councilmember Agarwal has his hand raised.
Thank you. Councilmember Agarwal.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I also like to hopefully take into consideration that is 1 o'clock in the morning in Boston. And I have class at 8 a.m.
Okay, thank you. And I think we're trying to be very sensitive to that. Would you request that we not continue? Is that, or is that your, your comment? I'm trying to figure out how to interpret what you've just said.
If it is just the item that Councilmember Vice Mayor Simon brought up, then yes, but I have, I should have a hard stop because I am getting exhausted.
Understood, understood. And thank you for, for speaking up. Sorry that I did not see your hand. At this point in time, let's vote.
Councilmember Agarwal, your vote, please.
I.
Councilmember Agarwal, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Blue, no. Councilmember Bowen, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes six to one.
Okay, at this point in time, we've got a presentation by the city clerk with respect to adopting a resolution to amend the city council handbook section pertaining to the vice mayor. So, Madam Clerk, if you would please present the item.
Yes. ITV, yep. Thank you, Mayor and council members. We're back again to talk about the council handbook update. This time for June 2024, we are asking for direction from council for use of the vice mayor title. On page nine of the council handbook, this is the current language. Rules committee made a suggestion to strike the middle paragraph. And they also had a discussion to discuss the vice mayor rotation based on seniority. And they gave us language that seniority is defined, defined as the date sworn into office. If two council members have equal seniority, there's an option to defer the nomination. If more than one member remains, there would be a random name drawing to establish seniority that year. The vice mayor title can only be used while conducting official business. It shall not be used on ballots or election materials. Should this policy be violated, then council should consider removal of the vice mayor. And council is to discuss what happens when the rule is violated. And there is no staff recommendation. It is up to council to decide how the vice mayor is selected, how the vice mayor title may be used, and what happens if the rule is violated. Thank you.
Okay, for the sake of completeness, I'm going to start with public comment. Do we have any public commenters on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. So at this point in time, I'll come to council for discussion. Council, Vice Mayor Simon, please.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this quick, move it quickly. It's a bit concerning. This item's been going on for almost a year now. I think last summer is, is when this is started, this all started. And my understanding is from our council member, Rainas, questioned, how do we decide on vice mayor, which is a very valid question. And I think we have solved that. That issue is there. But my question is, how did we come about to the second part about not using, not using the vice mayor title in certain circumstances? not using the vice mayor title in certain circumstances? That's my question. And it seems like it's really dragged on a long time. And why are we doing it? So I wanted to share some information. Some may have seen it, some may have not. I'm going to share it with all our council members. I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave some copies with the city clerk. If there's members of the public that would like to see this, I'll pass this on. But I'm just really curious as to why, as you see, one of our council members has used the title of vice mayor previously on non-city business. And why is this a big deal now? Why is this dragged on a year? To me, this is an example of why we are not getting enough real city work done. We are just spending so much time on issues that really are not issues. Councilmember Aguilar brought up a point about another jurisdiction that doesn't have this matter. I'm on another jurisdiction, Oreloma, where this is not even discussed. I mean, there's presidents, vice president, and we get work done. We're not spending a year talking about these type of matters. So really concerning to me that we're doing this. Me as a person of color, I don't know if that's a matter, why this is happening, I don't know. But to me, it seems like, let's move on. I agree, let's get a rotation that's defined. But as far as getting into where we can use the vice mayor status or title, when it's been used by other council members that are on council now, to me, it just does not seem effective use of our time or fair or just. But I'd like to make a motion to approve the vice mayor handbook with only the rotational based language on it.
So I've got a motion by council member, by Vice Mayor Simon, that, I want to be really clear about what that motion is. So I don't know if you can show us the language. I'm assuming you don't, you don't have a proposed red line? Vice Mayor? Yeah, that's fine.
ITV, can you share my screen, please?
Just the first dark bullet with the two subbullets.
So is this, this is to city clerk. Is this directly from, is this word for word what's in there already? And it's just kind of bulleted?
This language is not in there already. So this is, this bullet, this page is what talks about the vice mayor. And so the second, the middle paragraph that starts at during and ends with the vice mayor, that was recommended to be struck from the rules committee.
And then replaced by the blue page?
There was no recommendation on a replacement. I think that was what the discussion was meant for council.
Perfect. Okay, and so what I've got is I've got a recommendation, I've got a motion. I'm going to interpret your motion, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page. It essentially goes ahead and deletes that second paragraph on the green page, beginning with during and ending with vice mayor. And replacing it with, I'm looking to you, I think just the first bullet? Or something that's substantially similar to that first bullet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Now I'm coming to you, Councilmember Blue.
I might be able to share a, shine a little bit of perspective on this. First, I do want to say, I think it's tragic that someone would think on the council that this is taking place because he's a person of color. This conversation started when Councilmember Rainas asked, and I believe Councilmember Azavito was the vice mayor. I don't think it has anything to do with that. I think it has to do with the fact that when she asked and we went to rules and the suggestion was that we went from of an election process where the council elected the vice mayor to a rotational process, that, that, at that point, there should be, it's, it's just a rotation. It's random, it's, it rotates. It's not four votes to say that the council is elevating someone to vice mayor status. And I probably shouldn't even use the word elevate because vice mayor is just an honorary title. It doesn't mean anything else. So the rules committee thought, I believe, how do we reconcile the fact that this is rotational when it comes to not having endorsements or the title being used outside of work? And I think that's how we got to where we got to with that. I will say that this, this handout here, where now was the case, the vice mayor was elected by the council. And so I think that there, maybe that's what caused the, the determination that if we're going to go to a rotation basis based on seniority, then, then it shouldn't be used. It should just be a council member. Because the only time the vice mayor really comes into play is if the mayor misses a meeting or the, or needs someone to fill in for the mayor at a certain public event. So if it's rotational, I don't think that, I thought that, I think the thought was that it shouldn't get involved in politics, shouldn't get involved in endorsements, shouldn't get involved in listing on election materials. I think that's where the rules committee was coming from. I don't mean to speak for my colleagues on rules, but I think that was the thinking behind it.
Next, I'll go to Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Please hold. Sorry, when we are on Zoom, I can't share a presentation. Okay, now Councilmember Aguilar. We hear you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez, thank you, Kelly. You know, I, I personally, I, I feel like this is blasphemy. It is not only petty, but it's also discriminatory. You know, we, we should, we're over here, you know, celebrating Pride Month diversity. But yet we're trying to put forth policy that would prevent somebody from using a vice mayor title. When I ran for California State Assembly in 2021, my candidate designation, my ballot designation was vice mayor of San Leandro. And that did not give me an upper hand, but I did use that. And it was a valid title that was approved by the Secretary of State. So if this language does come on, you know, I, I would challenge, if, you know, I do become vice mayor and I run for reelection, I would challenge and threaten to sue the city for this. I think this is something that is discriminatory and is petty. And I think we should just keep the council member comment and recommendation, the first bullet point, vice mayor rotation based on seniority. I think this is fine, but the bottom four bullet points should be removed. Because, you know, I don't think we should incriminate anybody who supposedly violates utilizing a title which they've earned by their colleagues or by their seniority. So I just think it's, it's a waste of time and petty. Those are my comments, thank you.
Councilmember Bowen, please.
I, I'm, I'm getting confused as to how we're throwing around pretty strong language about discrimination and this policy. The way that I'm reading this policy seems relatively straightforward. To not, to only use the vice mayor title while conducting official business. I also only use my council member title while I'm conducting business. I, I don't lead with that in my personal life. And then, to me, it makes sense to not use it on the ballot or election materials. And I remember when this came about, I think one of the first meetings after we came to council. And, and I don't remember all the, the reasons why, but I think the reason it keeps coming back is people want to use it for that purpose. And so I, that, that's the point of contention, is my understanding of it. And for me, like the simplest way, if we really want to just finish this, is to not change what we've already had in our handbook then. Because as is, we do not use it, correct? For, can you go back to what it as is? Sorry, I'm rereading it just so I can understand. Okay, so the, so the addition of a rotation, and I, and I got confused because I thought that that was already, I thought that we had already gone through that process to do. And so then, oh, we, oh, that's right, we were going to, but then we changed it because we wanted to figure out if we could add it to an election. So I would say, I, my, my preference would be to change it to the, to rotation and keep the election year as is.
Councilmember Blue.
There might be a way to make this easy, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion that we eliminate the title of vice mayor after Vice Mayor Simon's term and put in language that if the mayor needs assistance, he will appoint someone or it'll be given by seniority, it'll go down seniority by the, by the seniority of the council to fill in for the mayor.
I didn't quite understand that. Can you say?
Motion to remove the title of vice mayor effective January 1st, 2025, so that Councilmember Simon can fill out his term as vice mayor. And then if the mayor has a need for someone to fill in for the mayor, the mayor just appoints that person based on seniority on the council.
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Simon, and I'd like to second his motion.
Okay, so we have a second from Councilmember Aguilar. So I'm going to go to city attorney. Is the vice mayor a charter defined position?
It is.
So it would require a charter amendment to remove the position of my vice mayor?
Correct.
At this point in time, I'm going to go to Councilmember Azavito.
Yes, I have a question. I've asked it before, I'll ask it again. How many other cities are doing this where they're eliminating using the title of vice mayor for anything? Can you tell us how many cities are using it? Because last time it was none, so I'm just wondering why, what makes our city so special that we got to do it here?
I haven't done that research because I wasn't asked at the last meeting, so I don't have that answer.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and we've got a second. So the standing motion, looking at what we've got on our screen. Let me just make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So the motion says that what we have on the green screen right now, second paragraph, beginning with during an election year, ending with serve as vice mayor, that's just going to be deleted.
Second and third.
I'm sorry?
The screen's being second and third paragraph.
The second and third paragraphs, okay? Because it's different from what I had clarified the first time. So it is the second and third paragraphs that are being deleted. So that would be the first part of the motion. The second part of the motion would be to go to the blue screen and insert text that is substantially similar to the first bullet. By substantially similar, because well, it's got a bullet and I don't think we're going to stick a bullet in there as such. But those would be, that would be the essence of the words. And that would be it.
Just to summarize then, in our last two minutes, our last minute, I'm not going to take all of it. So it, so what this would, motion would do essentially would allow the person to list this and, and their ballot designation and in any other way they wish to. That's what this motion would do essentially.
Essentially, there would be no restriction on the use of the title of vice mayor. Okay, so I've not weighed in yet, so I'm going to weigh in a little bit. So what we discussed at rules, the biggest concern that I have is that, that given the approach that we use, it creates the impression that this has some notion of permanency. That by the election date, when, when the new council is sworn in, the person who said that they're vice mayor will no longer be vice mayor because it's rotational. And so I'm struggling with that. I don't see, I don't inherently have a problem with the use of the title. But unlike some cities where it would be for a longer term, where it could be elected, we're just rotating. And we know for a fact that the vice mayor will no longer be vice mayor on January 1st. Just by definition of what our, our system is that we're creating. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that a bit. But let's go to Councilmember Azavito.
You know what? That's not necessarily true. If you look in the history books, look at Bob Glaze, he was vice mayor more than one time in a row. So he was two times in a row and then he wasn't, and then he was a couple more times. So that's technically not true, what you're saying.
Under a ro.
Well, well, another person could be elected vice mayor at the council, yeah, like, well, under this system, you're saying.
Yeah, under the new.
Okay, okay, my bad, I've.
Yeah, no worries.
I'm, okay.
No worries, under the new system. Okay, any other questions or comments? So at this point, I'm going to call the question because I think that we're going to hit our time limit. If I call the question.
Can I clarify that we have a second?
A second was for Councilmember, oh, oh, well, you know what? Let's just be super precise here. Councilmember Aguilar, I just want to make sure that you're aligned because my first summary of the motion that you seconded it, seconded, only had the second paragraph being deleted. But it's the second and third paragraphs on that green screen. I don't know if you're sharing or not. Right, so this, the standing motion on the floor is this paragraph number two and paragraph number three, beginning of the words during an election year and going all the way through the end of that third paragraph, vice mayor. All that gets deleted.
Yes. That's my, that's my, that's my understanding. And then on the next page.
The first bullet in substantially the same form.
Gotcha.
Want to be clear.
Yeah, I support that motion.
Okay, so, so I've got a motion from council members, from Vice Mayor Simon. Councilmember Aguilar has seconded the motion, but now I'm going to come to city attorney for clarification.
To be clear, you're defining the selection or how the vice mayor is going to be designated, but there'll still be, there'll still be a vote essentially, that that person is elected as the vice mayor for that year. Just to be clear, okay.
And to be extra clear, it's more in the spirit of amended order. It's a perfunctory process that memorializes the execution of the process. Anything else to speak?
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Ballou, no. Councilmember Bowen, no. Councilmember Viveros Walton, no. Vice Mayor Simon, yes. And Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes four to three.
Does anyone want to extend our time? Councilmember Bowen.
I don't necessarily want to extend our time. I just have one concern and maybe I can ask about for our next meetings because the items obviously at the end of the agenda continue to be at the very end of the agenda. Is it possible to reorder it for the next meeting so that we can get to some of the meetings that we've been to? Because I, I want to make sure I can speak to them.
So why don't.
It's getting very long.
Understood, and I think that's a point well taken. So just as a matter of process, we can continue this meeting? Or can we, what would be the preference? But, because what she's saying is that she would like to have items 11 and 12 or 12 and 13, whatever the new numbers are, at the top of the agenda. And so I want to find the way that we actually get that done because I'm sensitive to her concerns.
So the recommendation would be to continue this meeting to a date cert, which would be June 17th. That would be the beginning, quote unquote, or the ending of this meeting. So this is a continued meeting. Finish the last two agenda items. Then you would adjourn the continued meeting and start the June 17th meeting.
And could we, as a matter of form, ask that people have their items 11 and 12, whatever the correct numbers are for those items, cover that in the top of the meeting so that we don't do it twice?
Yes.
Can do that as a matter of form, okay. So then we're going to continue this meeting. For the 17th of June. We are adjourned.